Welcome to the February 28th, 2019 Town of Sherburne Select Board Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order, ask the town administrator to read the agenda with any proposed changes. We do have one public comment. David?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we'll vote to amend or approve the agenda, and then the public comment period, then under consideration of a consent agenda with a payroll warrant, setting the next meeting dates of March 14th, March 28th, and April 11th, and approving the minutes of January 17th, 2019, and January 31st, 2019. And then at 7:15, a public hearing. Silva Dog, 247 South Main Street. The Select Board acting as hearing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 157A through C will hold a hearing to determine whether the dog in question is a dangerous or nuisance dog. After that, 2019 Annual Town Meeting, consideration of warrant articles, FY 20 Departmental Budgets and Capital Plan, Discuss Governance Task Force II Survey Results with Corey Lincoln, who was on the task force, and then just a discussion of budgeting for leap year compensation. Under Routine Business, Finance Director Report, Town Administrator Report, Selectmen Reports. And then an Executive Session. The Executive Session is to adjourn to Executive Session and Select Board may return to open session. The Executive Session is called for exemption, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, police lieutenant, police chief. Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town and the chair so declares, CM&amp;D Union Memorandum of Agreement, possible return to open session to potentially ratify the agreement. And subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town and the chair so declares, Library Project.
Terrific. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Just a second.
A question?
Yes, sir.
I thought, I thought at some point we were going to discuss the possibility of addressing a possible open meeting law issue. And it has to be done within, I think, 10 days. Is that going to be discussed at some point, or has that been settled, or?
I believe that would come up under the budgeting for leap year compensation, which was the topic that caused the violation.
So that's how we're dealing with it?
I believed that would, the discussion would come up at that time, under that.
Okay.
But you could amend the agenda and put it in there.
I just want to be sure that we didn't let some time limit go by without doing something. However you want to, it's fine.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve. It's been seconded. All those in favor? Terrific. We have one public comment from John Higley.
John Higley, 14 Saddle Brook Road. I'm also chairman of the Planning Board. I just wanted to let you know that the Planning Board met Tuesday this week to talk about, to follow up on the February 14th meeting here at Town Hall about the Town Center and the Barsky Company proposal. The Planning Board discussed a number of issues, but we voted unanimously in support of suggesting to you folks to request that the Board of Health, working with DPW, that the Board of Health conduct a groundwater test to evaluate Jamison Field. We think that's one of the sort of things that the town really ought to have our own information, and that's kind of a go-no-go thing that would really, I think, if you're, if you're for or against the project concept, you'd want to know this good information. So we, we, I just want to let you know that the Planning Board felt that that was really an important thing to do, and we ought to do it sooner than later, in part because the ball fields will be in use. So if we wait too late, it'll be a little disruption there, and I just think the sooner the better.
When you say a groundwater test, what do you mean, John?
Well, the, the concept that was brought up, has been brought up several times in this project, is using the Jamison Fields as a wastewater treatment plant recharge area. And its capacity to do that is, has been described to us by a test that the developers' engineer witnessed, not the Board of Health. It's not a certified test.
You're talking about asking them to do a deep hole test and a perk test? Is that what you're asking?
Correct. Yeah. And I think the town can do it, or the Planning Board just thought that the town could do it, and, and with a certi, and with the Board of Health there as a certified test.
And presumably the developer will be there as well, or at least invited to be there?
It's up to the town. I think.
I mean, I would encourage as many people as possible to be there, I guess, particularly the developer, because, you know, we're doing it again, because the developer didn't invite us the first time, so I think it'd be good not to remake those mistakes. Do you need any action from us? Do we just have to authorize David to authorize CM&amp;D to use a backhoe?
It's not on the agenda, and so I would respectfully request we put it on the next agenda for action.
That's, that's fine with me. I think the sooner the better. I'd say it's, in terms of cost, I think it's a pretty minor thing. So.
Any estimate of what the approximate cost is?
I can ask, but I have not.
I mean, do we need an agenda item to authorize a backhoe?
Well, in addition to the particular item, at the forum on February 14th, there was talk about the town buying into some experts to review the project, and I had advocated that time that that be done by the selectmen, because I've seen situations in towns where you have our own experts arguing against each other, back and forth, and not having consistent views. So I was thinking that we maybe ought to have a discussion of, all these, the issue you're bringing up, and the issue of, of what support is needed for the Planning Board and for the Board of Health to, to do whatever has to be done to evaluate the project, have that as one discreet discussion. And maybe we can, I don't know if the rest of the board agrees that we ought to have coordination among the experts that we have, but that's a discussion. Again, it's not on the agenda for tonight, but it's, I think it's a discussion that we ought to have.
Does it make sense to amend the agenda to deal with it tonight, if we're wanting to get this done sooner rather than later?
I think a perk test can be done up until April something.
Right. It can. I just think the sooner the better.
So our next meeting is on March 14th. Is that going to give us enough time to do this? Eric, I didn't fully understand. You made the comment about using a backhoe.
Just to use town forces. So if, you know, if the Board of Health is going to oversee it, they may even conduct a test itself. All we simply need is a, is piece of equipment from CM&amp;D to drive down the road and dig the hole.
You don't need a vote on that.
What's that, David?
You don't need a vote on that.
Yeah. I'm going to just do it.
I can see, can't the Planning Board, ask the Board of Health to go ahead and do it? I mean, why would?
I think the Board of Health needs to be authorized to do it.
Oh, on, because it's on the fields.
I mean, it'd be essentially a zero-cost thing. Can, I mean, if the Board of Health has the expertise, what's the cost of PVC pipe and water?
I think John's saying it's the authorization to.
Okay.
To do that.
Don't we have a, I mean, again, this is probably something for a later conversation, but we have a leach field on that field already. The elementary schools' leach fields are on that field.
Right.
I would think we'd know if those soils were not suitable for a leach field, but maybe not. Does that ever get inspected, when we have inspection results from that leach field? I mean, I'm not against doing the test. We should do the test, but it also seems like we've got a lot of information probably out there already.
We'd be in favor of reviewing that information and finding out where exactly in the field it would be tested, the previous tests have been done, because it's a fairly large field.
This is, this has been, I kind of agree with Paul. This has been kind of a contentious issue with touching the fields, and I think we probably should have an agenda item.
Great.
To discuss this. I, I mean, I agree with you. I think we should do it sooner rather than later, but I don't want to get in trouble about voting on something that we didn't have on the agenda.
Dig in the same spot they dug before.
And in that, in the meantime, if we're going to put it on the agenda in two weeks, we'll have time to research exactly where those current leaching fields are and the last time they've been tested. So maybe we have some, we can gather some information between now and the 14th.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the Board of Health is meeting next door right now, so I don't know if you want to.
I spoke to somebody, I imagine, that's going to be discussed.
Okay, great. Thanks, Sean.
Thanks.
Jeff had something, Chuck.
Our next item on the agenda is the consideration of the consent agenda. I've got a couple of minor typos on the January 17th. They're not substantive. I'll give those to Diane. But do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
One motion. One item that's just missing, you're missing one of the, the public hearing on the 16th.
Yeah, the 316, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't put down the March 16th meeting. That's what, meeting with advisory. I've actually posted it already on the, on the website. There's also a 316 meeting.
I'm sorry, 1-5 or 1-6?
March 16th, we're also meeting at the advisory hearing.
That's the Saturday.
That's the Saturday.
Yeah.
Voting session.
The 14, 16, 28, and April 11.
Terrific. Do I have a motion, motion to approve the consent agenda with that meeting added?
So must.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, our next item is scheduled for 7:15. We're a little ahead of, is everyone, everyone's ready to go? Terrific.
Well, you said public hearing. You got to start it, when you say you're going to start it, though.
Terrific. Let's move on then to, out of order, we have a, any town administrator reports?
No, I was just going to talk more about the warrant.
So we can certainly do that in the.
We need some sort of plan for when we're going to sign it, when we're going to finally call and say that the warrant is in the, in the condition that you want to sign. Right now, there are two articles that are questionable, that haven't, that should be voted to add to the warrant.
You're talking about Articles 13 to 14?
Right.
For the Housing Partnership and the CPA?
And we've voted on the rest of them already?
Not all of them. Most of them down.
How about?
If you vote the warrant, it's going to take care, you wouldn't have to add it. But those seem to have questions, those two.
We don't have any, we don't have any language on one of them. 13, we don't have any language.
Where does, where does 13 stand? Like, from the Housing Partnership? Have they submitted anything, or?
Alicia Goody was talking to Town Council and found, you know, some information about that it could be revived, and what, what it would take to revive it. But that committee hasn't met to discuss the results back.
Has Town Council reviewed the proposed language for Article 14, the CPA?
Oh, yes. It came from council.
That was, that was their language?
Yeah.
Okay. And Paul, I know this is an article you were interested in. Are you comfortable with that language? I'm just trying to figure out the status of those.
That's just the statutory language, yeah. I mean, if the town was going to go forward with this, they actually have to decide on a percentage. This allows a range of percentage up to 3%, but you could do, you know, 0.5, 1%, 1.5, 2%.
In my recollection from several years ago, there isn't even a minimum threshold, right? I mean, you could do a tenth of a percent.
Yeah.
I moved, we put this on the, on the warrant.
Why don't we do that in the regular schedule? It's on the agenda.
Well, you said we were moving ahead to, later, I don't know. Will we wait until 7:15?
I think we're there, but that's only.
So I've already moved, so when we get back to it, somebody can second it, and we'll be all set.
We'll do it now. I'll second it. All those in favor of adding the CPA article?
Thank you, Gary. I love the sufficiency.
14. All right, Article 14. Terrific. We've hit the witching hour, 7:15. The next item on the agenda is a dangerous or nuisance dog hearing involving the Silva Dog at 247 South Main Street. The Select Board is going to be acting as a hearing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, Prince A to C, to hold a hearing to determine whether the dog in question is a dangerous or nuisance dog. Who will be making the initial present?
Mrs. Silva, is he?
Mrs. Silva. My husband could make it tonight.
Well, before you start.
I think we have to hear from him.
Before you start, I, I have to make a disclosure that I live.
That's what I thought, yeah.
I have property immediately across the street from the address where the dog is located. I would have to recuse myself if I have a financial interest in this. And I've been trying to figure out, I've, I've met you once, I think.
Yes.
I don't, didn't even know you had a dog. A dog has never bothered us on our side of the street, and it's Route 27, so it's a very active street with a lot of cars and traffic and all of that. So I, I don't feel like I have a financial interest in the outcome. But I'm certainly happy to recuse myself if that's, if anybody requests it. Otherwise, I'm going to make this disclosure that I'm located near the property, so everybody knows that I have that kind of appearance issue, that it might be a conflict. So if anybody wants me to step down, say it now.
Hello?
Then I'll hang around.
Terrific. Um, why don't we start off, I, I thought the normal procedure was to start off with the.
Complaining party.
I'm sorry?
Usually the complaining party.
Right. Oh, it is? I thought normally we started off with a presentation from Sergeant Tedstone.
Oh, Tedstone's here.
Well, you can do that. Who signed the complaint? I guess Tedstone signed the complaint, right?
There's no complaints, or what did I forward to you?
Yeah, we've got it in our package right here.
The request to hold the hearing, I thought, was from you, Sergeant. So why don't we start off with your presentation? I'm sorry, let's just do it in that order. Thanks, Sergeant.
Do you want just a summary of events, or do you want the whole kit kaboodle, or?
I, I think a summary would be fine.
On Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, at approximately 3:22 PM, I was dispatched at 247 South Main Street, along with other police personnel and fire personnel for a female that had been bitten by a dog. I was told that the victim was bitten in the arms and the hands and was bleeding extensively or severely. I responded and spoke with the resident, who I know is Mr. Silva, and I spoke with him regarding the incident. Chief Kenny and other fire department personnel responded and treated the victim, who was actually his mother, in the kitchen as I spoke with Mr. Silva. I did ask to see the dog. The dog was in the garage in a safe area when we, before we responded. That was one of the things that we asked be done, and it had already been done. The dog came out and kind of approached me indifferently and jumped, and then was put back into the garage. So no real issues with me, no particular incident that I can speak of. When I met the dog, he seemed like a typical 13-month-old golden retriever. However, Mr. Silva did tell me that about, well, sometime in the past, the dog did the same thing to his wife and sent her to the hospital as well. So there are two instances in the past months where this, at the time, 13-month-old golden retriever put two people in the hospital with some pretty significant injuries. As a result of the bites, I felt that it was important to request the hearing, and that's where we are today.
Terrific. And your report indicated that Mr. Silva had advised you that the dog, is it pronounced Athos?
Athos.
Has been enrolled in a six lesson training program at New England K9 in Hopkinton?
That's what I was told, correct.
Terrific. Any questions for Sergeant Tedstone?
I just want to confirm with Diane that the notices were sent out about this hearing, right?
Yes, they were. They were sent by regular, meal and certified, Nick.
Okay, so, because I don't know if anybody.
It was legally posted in the newspaper.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah.
So I have a question.
Please.
As I understand from the reports, each of these incidents, these two incidents, happened inside the house of the dog owner, and the people injured were all immediate relatives. In other words, this wasn't a case of general public, strangers, or people in the neighborhood getting bitten. It was all inside, inside one private home.
Correct. I'm not sure.
No, it's not your turn to speak. This is for Sergeant Tedstone. You'll have a chance after he finishes, then. Is, is that correct?
That's correct. That's what I was told, yes.
And the other part was that I want to follow up on a point that our chair was asking about. There was this course. Do you know whether or not the course was completed successfully?
I do not. It's not something we required at the time. It's just something that we spoke about when I was there. He's, I did follow up with him by phone. He told me that the dog had been enrolled, and I believe when I spoke with him by phone, the dog had attended one class, and I want to say it was a six-session class, but I'm not positive on that.
And then there was a, I think in a, in a letter, that there was going to, going to be some additional, something else additionally going to be done with the dog. Do you know anything about that?
I didn't see a letter. I'm not aware. There was some talk about, I think I made a recommendation that they seek out a behaviorist to maybe work on the issue, and I also recommended they contact the breeder for maybe some additional resources. But I don't, I don't recall any letter.
Okay, thank you.
Sergeant Tedstone, I had a quick question. In your report, you referred to, it looks like it's a database with, by an acronym, IMC. What?
Sorry, that's our internal computer system, the way we track reports. So the way we print reports, the way we document what we do in terms of.
So that's a Sherburne database, if you will.
Right, multi, yes. Several police departments use it. It's just a way to, to track what we do.
Terrific. Any additional questions for Sergeant Tedstone?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for the thorough report, sir.
Yeah, the report is very detailed. Thanks.
Because this is a public hearing, can we have the report marked as an exhibit?
In case this thing ends up in court.
Yeah, I would ask that, I would include his letter dated February 3rd, as well as the incident report, which I guess is from the IMC database, and then the narrative report, which is a two-page report, Reference 19-13-OF. I think that was, oh, there was also the report, I'm guessing this is from the Newton Wellesley, summary of the report from Newton Wellesley Hospital. So I would include that as well. Is it typical to include the notice for the public?
Yes.
Great. Let's include that as well. Do we need a formal motion on that?
No, you're the chair. You can just.
Great. All right, certainly agree with that. Terrific, all set. Please.
I'm Mrs. Silva. We own a golden retriever. He's about 13, 14 months old right now, and his name is Athos. And we love our dog. He's the sweetest dog I've ever had. I mean, it is the first dog I've ever had, actually. And the two accidents that happened could have been avoided, absolutely avoided. The first accident happened in December with me. I was going to work, he was going to sleep in his regular bed, and I needed to seclude him in the room where he usually is secluded when we leave the house, and I rapidly grabbed him by the leash, and I had no idea that you can do it, really, when the, when the dog is.
Just make a point of order before you start. Witnesses are supposed to be under oath.
Oh, you're right. Yeah, we need to, for the hearing, we need to swear you into, provide your testimony under oath. Help me out with the language here. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Is that an adequate oath, gentlemen?
It's perfect.
Great, thank you.
Sounds like it's been in court.
So the first accident was in December when I was going to work, and I grabbed him by the leash rapidly, and he was in his comfort zone. He didn't expect that, and that, he, he happened to bite me. It's the first dog I've ever owned, especially, I've never touched a dog of that size. He's 90 pounds. He's a big dog, and I didn't really know what to do. So I rushed myself to the hospital, and I didn't really have tremendous bites. I have some scratches, but I didn't really have tremendous bites. I was just scared more than hurting outside. The second, the second accident happens to my, happened to my mother-in-law, and she was visiting. My husband had to jump on the phone call at the same time that they walked in, pretty much, into the house. And he left her alone with the dog, rushed to the, rushed to the, to the second floor, and she was getting her stuff out of the, out of the suitcase, and she went to the room where he usually sleeps to just unpack. And it was a, like, I think he, he had territorial issues, so he kind of figured, he couldn't figure out who she was, and he didn't really see her before. He was very small when she visited last year. And he didn't remember who she was, so she was a guest to him, and he felt like he probably needed to protect the house, so he beat her. So two accidents were completely avoidable, I think. I was not knowledgeable about what to do with the dog, how to treat the dog, so I immediately called, after my accident, to the school that he's going to right now, to K9 School, to schedule some lessons. So he's going through training. And after the second accident with my mother-in-law, we just figured out that he wasn't introduced to the mother-in-law. He didn't know who, who she was. So.
Some basic information. How old is Athos, and how big is he or she?
He's, he's about 13, 14 months old right now, so he's a little bit over a year, and he's about 90 pounds.
Any other questions up here?
Yeah, just a, a point. Apparently, the dog's unlicensed?
He's, he's licensed. For this year, we have to, we have to get a license for this year. But he's licensed. He has a.
According to the reports that we received, the dog is not licensed.
He has a, he has his.
I think the report, Paul, is that the dog's license was not renewed, and today is the last day to renew the license. So it had to be renewed by today, and so we were asked to remind you to make sure that happens.
Yeah, we'll do it, absolutely.
Because the town clerk will, will issue a citation on that, I guess. So, do you, can you fill us in about the class, the, the lessons that the dog took?
Sure. So the school is located in Hopkinton, and it's called the New England K9 School. It's a school that's owned by the gentleman that's been handling dogs for the last 40 years. And he's a good trainer. I've read reviews about him. I was talking to him. His name is Saul. And he has six sessions that you can take at any point of time during the life of the dog. And he usually teaches the dog one command, and he teaches the owners one command. Then we train the dog inside the house this command. Everything is, should be done on the leash, so he's not ever off the leash right now outside of the house. And inside of the house, when we train him, he's on the leash as well. And so once we're done with one command, we come back with a second, to the second, we already had three classes. And every time, he checks our work, pretty much. He makes sure that the dog understands the commands. And then he, when he's comfortable, he gives us the green light for the second or third command that he's teaching us. So he knows basic commands, like, come, sit, stay. So he knows basic commands like come, sit, stay, heel, down, eat. So he's, he's, he's learning. He's learning slowly, but.
Okay.
I don't know what the actual pace should be, but I think he's learning slowly.
So there was a statement in, are you finished?
Go ahead, Paul. I'm fine.
There was a statement in the report that said that your husband had reservations about Athos and was going to look into getting rid of him. What happened on that?
It, it was impulse and he, because the dog beat his mother, he impulsively stated that he's getting, he's looking to get rid of the dog, but he really is not. So what we are substituting that action plan with, we're going to, we're going to be neutering the dog. We have a surgery scheduled for March the nineteenth, so we love the dog. He's not going to get rid of the dog.
Go ahead, Eric.
You said the, the two bites. The first one to you is maybe because you surprised him a bit and the second one, your mother-in-law, based on maybe he wasn't familiar with her. How often is he around other people? I know he's never bit anyone, says like, never bit anyone outside of the house, but I mean, it might be some concern on other strangers. So if he goes for walks, I mean, he goes on the reservation property, I think it's right behind your property or anything else like that. Is he ever exposed to other people he doesn't know, strangers and?
So outside of the house, he loves everybody. He is absolutely fine with other people, other dogs and kids. Also, we have a very friendly house. We have a lot of friends where we invite just our relatives from other countries as well and our friends of all ages, including kids, small children from, you know, all ages groups, all age groups. And he has, he has ever been the sweetest dog to everybody. He was, but he was never left alone with an unknown person. I think what happened with my mother-in-law is that he had no idea who she was. It's a new smell, new person and my husband rushed to the second floor. He didn't really introduce her and she's a smaller, smaller-sized woman, so he probably, she probably got scared as well a little bit because he's, he's just enormous. He's a huge dog and maybe he just felt something. I don't know. I don't know. I wasn't there really, but I'm just assuming that she might, might have been a little bit scared and he usually approaches every people to give him a little hug or, you know, stroke or something and she didn't do it. She didn't build a contact with him because probably she was just a little bit, I don't know, she was, she didn't know how big he was.
Do you take this dog to play with other dogs or?
Yes, so we, we are taking him to play with another golden retriever that's, a dog of our real estate agent that's actually sold us the house. So she has a sweet, will retriever female. And also his mother comes over sometimes for meals to play with him. So he is, he's playing with, with our friends' dogs and also when we take him out to the trails, he plays with everybody.
Any incidents with the other dogs?
No, he loves everybody, even with the dogs that he doesn't know.
Did I hear you correctly that he's on a leash when he's outside your house?
Right now, yes. After, after all of this accidents, yes.
Including when he's been walking on the trails with these other dogs?
With the other dogs, so last year when it was warmer, he was walking without the leash. We started to take him off the leash, but once we received the quarantine letters to put him on the leash, we pretty much, the quarantines only last for ten days at a time, but we just, to be safe, we walk him on the leash.
And the other thing I was unclear about is how many of the six training sessions has he completed?
It's, it's as, it's as six sessions in total.
Right.
For the lifetime of the dog.
Right.
And we completed already two, three, three sessions, three commands we learned.
Any other questions up here? Sergeant Tedstone, I, I wanted to hear from the dog's owner first, but do you have a recommendation on what, what the board, is there a recommendation on what you think the board should do?
No, I'm going to leave that up to you. I don't really have a recommendation.
Any sense up here, the, the wounds occurred in the house, but I'm inclined to, I think we should consider whether or not the dog should be leased whenever outside the house.
Absolutely.
That's just.
Absolutely.
Any other?
Should be leashed?
So there's two concerns I would have that Chuck was starting to develop. One is the effect on the general public and that's covered by a leash. The other concern I have is if there's a baby in the house and I hear that that may be in the offing and if that's the case, the baby's helpless and if the baby's attacked by a dog, that could be severe. The repercussions are very severe for a dog that attacks a baby. The ability of a baby to withstand a attack like this would be not favorable to the baby. So the, the two risks that we need to provide against, so I'd want to see something done in the house to make sure the baby is separate from the dog for the time, at least for the foreseeable future.
So we have gates that are locked, that are locking him from the second floor where the baby is going to be and where we sleep and where we spend our quiet time. So the baby is going to be completely separated from the dog by a whole floor. And also he's secluded in a specific room, like for example, when we are not in the house, like today, he is completely by the, he's locked by the door. He can't get out of that room where he is right now. So he is not browsing around the house like he used to before he beat me and my mother-in-law. So he has his strict gates where he is. He can't get out of that first floor area and also he has a smaller room where he spends time when there is nobody in the house. And obviously we're not going to be leaving the baby with the dog, considering everything that happened. I mean, we, we understand it's not, I mean, it's an animal and we have a baby. We're not going to be leaving the baby alone.
Any other comments or discussion? Do we need a formal?
Yes, we do. So I, I think we want to classify the dog as a nuisance dog for purposes of, there are complicated legal definitions that would be too long to explain, but that would set the stage for us saying that the dog has to be leashed when it's outside the house and will allow us to say that within the house, the dog has to be separated from the baby.
Yeah.
Want to see those, those two steps. I'm mindful of the fact that animals are not intentionally bad. As you know, I have the cattle ranch across the street and I would say that it's never the animal that's bad, it's usually the owner that's bad. The owner doesn't have enough training, the owner doesn't know enough about the animal and from what you've said, you're not all that familiar with the dog. This, this was a fairly new experience for you. So to some extent, I think that there needs to be some, some training for you and the dog together.
That's what we're going through at the K-9 School.
Yeah, so I, if possible, I'd like to add that as a, an additional thing, that there be some, some training. Cause I see you as the prime, the key person in this mix because you, you're going to have the baby and you're going to have the dog in the same place and if your husband's not there, you have to deal with the situation. And this being your first dog and all of that, I really think that you'd benefit from, from having a training session with you and the dog together. Not that you drop the dog off and have a trainer work with the dog, you and the dog together.
Yeah, I understand.
So I, I think I agree with Paul on the training, that there should be some training and I think I agree that the dog should be leashed outside of the home. I would also say there should be an opportunity to have that tested a year or two years from now, in other words, I don't think it should be a life sentence if this dog has not had any other incidents. There ought to be an opportunity for the owners to, to have that portion of it lifted and, and I don't, I, I don't personally feel we should be involved in dictating what goes on, on inside somebody's house. I think the, you know, the penalty they would pay if their dog attacked their baby is far greater than violating an order of the Sherburn Board of Selectmen would ever be. We're not going to, whatever we say is not going to make a difference in how they care for their baby and I don't think we should be involved inside somebody's house like that. So I would object to that part of it. I understand where it's coming from, Paul. I know it's, it's well-intentioned. I just don't believe or think that we have a right or, or a need to get involved to that extent.
I agree with Mike on that. I think if we limit it, like to revisit it in a year to see if we still need to have like a leash, leash restriction and, and the training's been completed, then we could, I, I think a year would be a good timeframe to revisit it.
Yeah, I agree.
But I don't think we should be, I agree with Mike. We shouldn't be dictating what.
This dog's a year old. I think a year from now would be, I think it's appropriate that the dog be leashed at this point. I mean, these are two pretty serious incidents, fortunately, unfortunately for you both inside your house, but.
Would you specify that the training has to include the owner as well? Cause I do agree with Paul, especially a first-time dog owner.
I do agree with that, absolutely.
And we've done that before, that, we've done that a few times before that I can remember.
Yeah, I think the last hearing, we had specified that. So I don't think we have a second. Paul, are you comfortable with removing the piece of it regarding the barriers inside the house?
Yes, and, and with the one-year limitation. Just with the caveat that I, I think it's important for you to understand what I was trying to say about this baby. I just have the sense that you don't have all that amount of experience with a dog and you may not be aware of the catastrophe that could happen.
Yeah, so I'm going through the training with him in the K-9 School, so it helps me a lot actually to learn that you can't do any rapid moves, can't approach him when he's eaten, basic commands I'm learning and so it's, it's a new experience for me, but he's doing well. He's, he's, he's understanding the training.
Terrific. Well, I'll second Paul's motion before we have any discussion up here, assuming a public hearing.
Yeah, we want to get public comment.
Any public comment about the incident or the proposed order? Jeffrey?
I would recommend, not that we get, I agree with Mike, but since it has, whatever great, I have a thirteen-month-old Australian Shepherd, which is a great training, is also something you should consider, I think, not that you would mandate it, but it's really effective.
Any other?
Particularly out of the house.
Any other comments from the public? Suzie? And I'm sorry, you need to identify yourself. Jeffrey, one.
Jeff Dogger in Surry Lane. Susan Tyler, Western Avenue. I didn't hear, will the Board of Selectmen or the Animal Control Officer be getting a report once the training is completed? Get an update on the dog as to how well he did and whether there's an additional need or?
That is what we've done in the past on training. We, we've put that into a couple of the orders. I think it's a good idea, Suzie.
Especially if the dog is soon to be neutered, there may be a change in behavior with, with that also coming up, so.
And maybe we do that, schedule that for one year from now when, to reconsider the lease portion of it.
Done in the past.
That's a good suggestion, Suzie. I would support it, but it's not my motion.
I'll accept that as a, as a welcomed amendment.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Any other comments in the public up here? Okay, it's been moved that the order would be that the dog be leased, on leash anytime outside the house, continue the training and that, that we receive a report within a year about the training with the possibility that the requirement that Athos be leashed outside the house would be revisited. And have I missed anything in the summary? All in favor of the motion?
Okay.
Terrific.
So you're going to write this up, Chuck?
No.
Just going to write it up?
Yeah.
Somebody's got to write it up, I mean.
I'll, I'll write it up and send it to Diane. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think we talked about that a little bit earlier. I think she, she said she was going to get the dog licensed, so.
The next item on the agenda is the 2019 Annual Town Meeting, consideration of warrant articles, departmental budgets and capital plans. Are we going to go immediately into the Governance Task Force summary or?
Yeah. I just, I want to bring up something with the budget.
Great.
I just wanted to have Sharon, I've been a little confused, I mean, I know you've been sending the models and a lot has changed. I think a few weeks ago, you sent an email talking about no change to the tax rate and now it's looking like there's going to be a large increase to the tax rate and I just want to know what happened and how things have been changing so much.
Well, we, right now, we had a meeting last night and Advisory is very set on not having the rate go up. So they are going to be drafting a letter to send out to all the department heads to ask them to revisit their budgets and see what they can do to really cut, if, if there's, if there's a possibility of doing cuts. Right now, we are at, I think we need about three hundred thousand in cuts to get to a below twenty rate and we met with the schools last night. They've done a great job and they're going to come back hopefully with something else and.
What was the confusion in the beginning? Because I think originally, was it the difference between the tax levy and what we did last year, the tax levy limit or?
No, what happened was my model, some, they had gone in and changed the model and made the, the, made the budget projection equal to what the ask was from Advisory. So that was the confusion. So when I went in and looked at the adjustments I had made, that, that's what happened. So I pulled those out. So right now, right now with everything that people have submitted, it's at.
You're confident that?
Yes.
This is where it is, actually. There still needs to be cuts from the budgets that we saw before. We still need to go back and look at cutting some more of that.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, so like I said, that email's going to go out, the email's going to go out from Stephen and then we're meeting, we're going to meet on Monday night in here. We're going to have a, do a, like all sorts of what-if scenarios, just see what we can do to really get that.
So I think, I think on our next meeting, we should be visiting these, hopefully by March fourteenth, you'll have, run through those budgets again and you can come back to us and say, this is our, this is where we're at on these budgets, because we need to vote on the budgets before the sixteenth.
Yep.
That are within, under the, per se of the Select Board.
Right.
Steve.
One, just a, one quick question. The tax recap that you handed out tonight showing a current projected tax rate of twenty dollars and thirty-eight cents?
Yeah.
That's the.
That's our current model.
That's the current model?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have those for everybody? I've seen, I might see them.
That's.
I didn't hand those out.
Um, I, I got.
I emailed them.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I emailed my, my model, but I didn't hand them out.
Mr. Leahy? And who are you?
Steven Leahy, 12 Leominde Street, a member on the Advisory Committee. Just, let's turn and point out, we continue, as we've kind of taken in some new information, we continue with the budgets. A number of the budget departments have come through already and passed through. We are going to ask the budget department heads and the budget makers to go back and look at their budgets once again. Some of the information that comes in, you know, effectively, the tax rate is the amount of money we need to raise as a town divided by the property values in this town. It's a fraction or a ratio. And some of the new information that has come in recently, we recognized that while the budget makers are doing their darndest to keep budgets within control, that's really our top line, our numerator, right? The denominator, the property, the assessed property values in this town are, have a hard time going up, right? And so when your numerator goes up and your denominator does not move at all, you end up with a higher ratio and/or tax rate. It is a core belief of Advisory Committee that our tax rate being as high as it, as it is contributes to the fact that our housing values do not keep up with towns around and so we are going to have. And so we are going to ask the department heads to continue to work hard to cut any unneeded spending and to do our darndest to get the tax rate back to estimate, the estimated tax rate back to below $20 per house.
Just one thing to mention along with this revenue thing, on the revenue side and the fact that our revenues are not going up. We do see new construction going on in town, but at the same time, Steve and I were discussing this offline, that a lot of the higher-end properties are now selling below their assessed values. So there's, like, the assessments on those, on the highest, like, the stuff that's probably over $1,000,005 may be coming down because they're all selling well below their assessed values, which is kind of a... That could drive our denominator down, which could be even worse.
And as far as I may add, one more thing. The only other thing I will add is that Sharon, who does an excellent job keeping us informed of her models, and we do our darndest, there is a communication gap, right? We are emailing spreadsheets back and forth amongst a total of nine, at least nine people, and sometimes there is something that is missed. In an ideal world, we would have one sort of shared document whereby any changes are accounted for, versions and iterations of that spreadsheet are kept and saved. We, as a town, don't have that infrastructure to be able to work in that manner at this point.
So we have Google Docs? We can't use Google Docs or something like that?
When I first inquired about using some sort of shared document like that, I was informed that that would not pass muster.
All right. Yeah. I don't know what that means.
I guess a question, just how then is the information saved and sent?
Oh, you think that's what the issue is?
Is it sent via town email address, or is it sent...
Yes.
Okay, it is.
I mean, the other big thing is, like, what Steve was saying is that the overall property values have always been creeping up, but this year they actually went down. $15 million in total for the town, so that's...
On existing properties, not new growth? That doesn't include new properties that have come online, or just in total?
The new growth number was low as well.
The new growth number is estimated to be lower than in previous years.
Yeah.
Anybody talking to the brokers to find out why the prices are going down?
I had had an unofficial bumped into a broker who said, kind of similar to what George said, on the high end, the houses are not moving. Be lower in homes, you are very attractive with our school district, but be higher in homes, not.
One, anecdotally a little bit, I financed some construction in Dover, and one thing I've heard from buyers, they don't look in Sherburne. If they're buying, if they have $2 million to spend on a house, they're going to buy a house in Dover, have the same schools, and a $13 tax rate.
And a more liquid asset.
So that's, I think people are driven to the Dover market and not to Sherburne based on that.
I don't think that's new to any of us.
That's not new.
No, but I'm saying, so the market above $1,000,005 is very shallow in Sherburne. There's not a lot of buyers, there's not a big buyer pool, whereas it's much bigger in Dover. So people, if they're anxious to sell their house, they're going to drop their price to get to a point where they actually have some buyers.
Yeah, I get that. And you're describing the problem, and I guess what I was looking for was the reasons for the problem. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know. That's...
Dover's closer to Boston than Sherburne. You may have heard of that.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. Is it traffic? Is it, you know, lack of a downtown? Is it... What is it? You know?
I don't know the answer.
The chair of the Board of Selectmen? I don't know.
It's funny, I've seen that in none of the survey results, but we'll chance to ask Corey whether or not that came up in the survey results. Jeffrey?
Jeff Corbin, Surveyant. To answer my question, I think it's the tax deductibility changes. Now, there is a max of how much you deduct, the mortgage interest and park taxes, so if you have a $1 million home, you may even get close to that, but if you go to a million and a half, you may lose the deductibility. So I think it's related to the tax law changes. So I'm not a real estate person.
There was some, and also in the fall, there was a downturn. I mean, this is just in Massachusetts in general, and the city and everything. In the fall, there was a big downturn, not so much in prices, but in volume of sales. Interest rates crept up in the fall. They've come back down now, and in at least the city, in the Somerville, Cambridge markets, they've seen a big uptick in traffic again. I think after the election and after the holidays, stuff has been selling already there. And I think with interest rates a little lower, people have come off the sidelines. I don't know how it is in the suburbs. I haven't really seen much going on yet, but...
It seems to me it would be a productive thing for the town to do, to do a little bit more marketing and self-promoting. If this is our, you know, if our fiscal issues are driven in part by the fact that people don't think it's a good value here, I mean, we should take that head-on. I've been surprised for a long time that we don't have, you know, a better story out there, and I think we could.
I was going to say exactly the same thing. I, you know, for all of us who've worked in Boston all of our careers, we know how few people know where Sherburne is. I mean, I think there's, it may not solve our problem, but the change in tax law affects all the towns, not just us. Definitely, we have a marketing problem.
The marketing's usually done by chambers of commerce, so we don't really have a chamber of commerce, but we do have a business association. Maybe with the Realtors and the Business Association, maybe with some help from the town, we can put together something that says why Sherburne is a great place to settle and get some... I like the idea of getting some favorable information out there about Sherburne.
I think for their own good, real estate agents would be people that would want to be very involved in that. I mean, there's some real estate agents in town that their livelihood is selling houses in Sherburne.
Yeah, but we're small market. I mean, I think it's really on us. I think it's on the town. I think it's worth, you know, the brokers can help, but I really think it's something that the town could productively think about how to do a better job of, you know, starting from the website, starting from, you know, anything we can do to sell the attributes of the town to people who appreciate the attributes. We heard some of them at that symposium a couple of weeks ago, people who moved here because of open space and so forth, were the closest town-in that has that kind of a character, but, you know, that market is narrow, but it's out there.
But we're relatively unknown. I can say, I can confirm what Marion was saying, that I spent a lot of time on state boards, and Sherburne is a complete unknown.
If the state boards don't know where Sherburne, then that's a real problem.
Everybody knows where Dover is.
And they think of Shelburne.
Yes. I often get confused with Shelburne Falls, yeah.
Well, maybe that's our motto, not Shelburne.
Bill Cosby does not live here.
I'd say man trusted by the sea, change of name.
I think this would be a good...
That year.
I think this would be a good topic to discuss at one of our meetings after the annual town meeting, because I think there are things that we should consider doing, and so...
And I think in conjunction, as Paul said, with the Sherburne Business Association, maybe get them to come to one of our meetings and discuss with them and some real estate agents how we can all work together to promote the town.
Sherburne by Dover.
Terrific. We have, we have as an agenda item, the consideration of the warrant articles. Is there any discussion up here about the status and where we are before we move on to the Governance Task Force II survey results?
Well, aren't there some articles that we still have to vote on?
What's that, Paul?
You haven't voted any positions.
Yeah, not yet.
No, but I want to be sure that all the articles that are going on the warrant have been voted, because sometime Advisory's going to have a hearing, and they ought to have a final warrant, so...
Well, if you vote to approve the warrant, the...
Well, David, we have articles in here that don't have language. How are we going to vote to approve a warrant that has an article that doesn't have language?
There are two of them.
That's what people complain about every year.
And one other that we just had, so I expected this survey would be pulled off the warrant, but they're not, so...
13 doesn't have any language.
I think that's the only one. 14 we do have language.
14 has language, and we voted to include that earlier.
Right.
What is the status of 13?
The nuisance law.
What? What's the status of it?
They have to meet. They talk to the town council, and they got to meet, but we haven't, we don't have a word from them saying no yet.
We can pull 22 off, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I offered that as a, as something I heard someone ask for us to put on there, but I, you know, I don't really have the time to rewrite town council stuff, and, you know, we've got a very narrow issue, so...
So I'm going to have to take it off the warrant.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I would second that motion.
All right.
Because I think it needs a lot of work. Not that I'm opposed to the idea, it just needs a lot of work.
Yeah, it's not as broad as, I mean, we could have a broad nuisance law or even a broad law that was tied into all kinds of detail about construction equipment, but I think this is much more of a narrow issue. We should just rethink it and, you know, bring it up at the special town meeting or the next town meeting or whatever. This is not an urgent issue.
So Article 22, that's...
Yes, that's fine.
Did you see the language that was sent to that?
Yeah, I did, but it's not ready for primetime, so...
Yeah, and those articles are quite rightly...
Not from any, you know, flaw in AB's drafting. It's just, there's not been a meeting of the minds really yet, that's all.
No, that's fine.
I don't want you to, I don't want you to tell her, you know, we ripped her bylaw. That's not the point. You already did, yeah.
No, I just didn't know if you had seen...
I did, we did, yes. David and I just talked about it before.
Yeah, and those types of articles rightly deserve, they get a lot of scrutiny in town meetings, so...
The worst thing we're going to do is put a zoning article or an article like that on that doesn't have polished language. It's going to...
Right, that's, I think, a waste of time. So it's been moved and seconded to remove Article 22 from the town meeting warrant. All in favor?
Okay.
Does it make sense to approve the balance of the warrant except for Article 13?
What is, I mean, when will they be ready? Because are they going to be ready? I mean, it seems like it's now February 28th, and we don't have any language. It's getting a little late. I mean, but I do agree that it's important that we set up a housing trust, but we're getting...
Well, our next meeting is March 14th, and we have the advisory hearing on the 16th. I just don't think it's fair and courteous to a great board in the town that has to consider these issues to give them two days' notice. I think we ought to have a warrant.
I don't want to throw the committee into the bus, but this was only put on their plate by us when the warrant opened. Prior to that, it was something that we've been carrying forward from warrant to warrant.
What's the sense of the board? Do we want to approve all of the other articles other than Article 13? Or do you want to wait till we have the language for Article 13 and do it at our March 14th?
David, where's this language for Article 13 coming from? I'd just like to know mechanically, what are we waiting for on that?
Well, we can get the language pretty quickly. I'm just waiting for the committee on whether it's something that they want to, if they're ready to move forward with it. They would have to revive the corporation that was defunct. I think it's what, a few years of annual reports and working with town council to get it revived, and...
But why does that need a term?
Well, so that doesn't have to proceed putting it on the warrant. If we put this on the warrant, tell me you can vote it up or down, and then they can either be directed to, you know, revive the corporation or not.
Right.
We've already revived it once for a very limited purpose.
Right.
So...
Right. Just nobody's spoken out in favor of it.
I just spoke out in favor of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
So I think we should come up with language before, we don't even have time before the next meeting to put it on. That's the problem. Paul's right, it's going to be two days before the advisory hearing, which means we don't have a warrant for that hearing. When's that warrant have to be out for the hearing? Like, today?
The last time we signed it, March 8th. So that was a week before the hearing last time.
A lot of stuff, in the past, it's changed right up until, I mean, sometimes they change at that meeting and...
Usually it does, but it's just like the town meeting, you can propose change, but usually it's published, changed, danced at the meeting.
Yeah, of course, it's got to be.
Just as a matter of courtesy, the fact that we might have done things in the past, I mean, there's a lot of things that happened in the past that not necessarily what we ought to be doing today.
I completely agree with you.
David, did you have any draft language on this Article 13 from anybody?
No, but that's going to be standard, to form a trust is going to be standard language, and to revive that thing is standard language. I don't think it's anything complicated.
But why can't we do, let us talk about a special town meeting. Why does it have to be done at the annual?
It doesn't have to be done at the annual.
It's questionable if the specials, I mean, the special was for 41 North Main, which...
Why don't we just craft language right now to see if the town will vote to reestablish the housing trust and blah-bitty, blah-bitty, blah? What is it we're doing?
It can be very simple.
We can look at, so I think I already, we were way back from, I know there's been conversation...
With this committee, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, we can't wait for the committee. We need to get this on the warrant if it's going to happen, and then the committee can either catch up, or it won't pass the town meeting or something. But if it's, if it's a, I mean, you know, you could probably dictate it to Darren, but it's, if it's that simple, let's just dictate it and vote on it and close, you know, close the warrant and be on our way.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
I agree.
Basically use the same language that was the last time with the OPEB trust fund we created. It would be that language.
Can somebody come up with it before the end of our meeting, so we can...
Can you?
I don't come up with it right now.
Okay. But I mean, we can either vote it now, or we can vote it after our executive session, come back in and vote it.
Okay.
Just get done with it.
Yeah, I'd like to get it done tonight, so...
That would be great.
Great. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Governance Task Force II survey results. Corey and Adam, and could you both identify yourselves?
Adam Page, Peckham Hill Road.
Are you going to sing and dance?
Thanks, Adam.
Yes. Where's the lovely little pogg?
On a leash.
When our committee came before you the last time, and incidentally, Erin Carroll and Greg Kennan are also here from our committee.
And Corey, I think everybody knows you, but would you...
Oh, sorry.
Identify yourself.
Corey Lincoln, and I'm the chairperson of the Structure Town Government Committee Task Force. The last time we were here, we talked about the process that we had followed, and we also talked about the four warrant articles that we're sponsoring, but we didn't have the oppo, you had a very full agenda. We didn't have the time to talk about the results of our survey. And Adam Page and Erin Carroll, who are really the parent, godparents of the survey, Adam's going to give a report tonight.
Thanks for the opportunity to report on this. Just as a general overview of why we did it, a lot of our effort was research, understanding the DOR and Collins reports, and meeting with some of you, other department heads, and equivalent folks in other towns. And what we realized was that we hadn't gone out and asked the residents how they felt about a lot of these issues. So you have it in front of you. When it comes up, it'll come up, to avoid wasting time. So on your first slide, what I first want to talk about is the goal of the survey. So it was to gather, it was to gather citizens' input on key topics. I know there have been a lot of surveys done in town previously. This was very focused on the tasks, the task force's mandate. So we based questions on our research to date. We kept it as short as possible. And I mention that because we did get a lot of feedback that folk, folks wished we had been much more detailed in the questions. In that case, it would have been about 120 questions long and no one would have finished it. So we made some decisions on that. We used Survey Monkey, and I bring that up because it was a low-cost way to do this, very reputable, no reason that anyone else couldn't go ahead and do this themselves. And our goal is to incorporate this, these findings into our report outs and also see how it fits into the warrant articles that we're proposing. And we want, we will be sharing the results with the entire town. We're gonna ask to post those on the website, maybe link to it on Nextdoor, but felt like you, you all should sort of see this first. The results are, we got a 14% response rate, which is a really good response rate from talking with folks who are in e-commerce. So that's 486 people responded out of 3,500 residents over 18 years old. We asked 31 questions. We got a lot of comments. We got about 500, over 500, between 500 and 600 comments. Opening questions were people, some people wrote paragraphs. So there's a lot of content there to go through. In the interest of avoiding any unnecessary discussions or anything, we're gonna look at that ourselves. We're not necessarily gonna post that back out to the town. And one of the findings as we went through this was that we also ought to get the voice of town employees. So we did a second survey of town employees. Forty-one employees responded. The questions were essentially the same ones so that we could do a side-by-side comparison. And what I'll do is I will present back to you a file that contains all the results from that survey. So the goal of this meeting is to walk you through some of the context and the responses that have some particular relevance to the warrant articles that we're proposing. So we've got four warrant articles out there, one on making the treasurer an appointed position, another on making tax, property tax payments quarterly, and then two on roles and responsibilities, one on IT and one on HR. And so I called out the questions that give the citizen voice through this survey on those topics. And I know you've already skipped ahead, so I, I should have said this at first, but one thing to keep in mind is, when you look at the charts, they're a bar graph, and it looks like you kind of expect to see a bell curve. And I would challenge anyone who looks at this to think about, what do you want to see, right? Because it may look normal to see that distribution, but if you're asking a question like, how satisfied are you with X, you might not want to see a bell curve. You might want to see everything skewed to, I think that thing is great. So keep that in mind. Another recommendation is to use these as a baseline.
Adam, just a brief interruption. I, I really welcome that comment because the first time you go, you look at them, you're matching up against the bell curve, but even if it's just simply aspirational, that's a terrific point. Thank you for, for making that.
So then, related to that is, there's no reason this has to be a one-time exercise. It probably has the most value if it's done after a period of time repeatedly so we can see some kind of trending, to see, are we getting better? We don't have a baseline right now to compare these two. And I'm not gonna go through all the results, I'm gonna try to focus on the first ones, but please look at the rest of them at your leisure. And interrupt me whenever you want, obviously. So the first thing is the demographics, so I'm on slide four. So we asked people how many years they've been a resident. This was the only required question on the survey. I want to make sure that we could determine with some level of certainty that the responses were actually from Sherburne residents, because we posted on Nextdoor. So someone would have had to lie about being a Sherburne resident in order to have their response counted.
No, that would never happen.
Never. That would be pretty dastardly and a huge waste of someone's time, but... And there was one response from someone who was younger than 18 years old, but they only answered that one question and didn't answer any of the others, so it does not skew anything. So, right. So what's your age? So there's two sets of bars here. One is, the blue are the responses, and the gray is the actual population percentage in town. So you can see we're pretty well-represented in the older ages, the very younger ones, probably college folks who are residents but don't spend any time in town, and then we're kind of overrepresented on this survey in the 35 to 54 age range. Familiarity with how town government works? So you asked the question, how familiar do you feel you are with town governance in general? And you can see, there's quite a few people that feel like they have no familiarity at all.
Can I ask a question about that?
Please, yeah.
Because I've been trying to figure out what number three stands for. In other words, you've got five columns.
Yep.
And I, I get their labels under not at all, which is the one to the left, and under the one way to the right, which is very. But almost in everything, the number three is like the dominant thing. So is that, is that a little bit of both, or what does that mean?
So that's a great question. And it's pertinence to all these, so I'll, so the, there's a, I'm not a survey person, but I did some research. So there's this thing called the Likert scale. So what you do is, it's very typical when you're looking for customer satisfaction to ask a five-level question where value one is very poor or not at all or dissatisfied, and five is the opposite, very satisfied, excellent, whatever. So you've got this scale from one to five. And then you let people interpret where they fall on that scale. So if they're all the way over very strong, feeling very strongly positive, they give it a five. Very strongly negative, they give it a one. And then everything else in that is like a range. So if someone puts in a three, you can interpret that as they feel neutral. Does that make sense?
Is there a descriptor for it?
Nope. So in all these questions in the survey, it says, it's got a scale from one to five. And on one end it says very much, and others, and it says very little, and in the middle it's...
So I get to supply whether somewhat, a little bit yes, a little bit no? It's a self-descriptor.
Correct.
At our last, at our last meeting, we decided that number three, we referred to it as meh.
So that's what I was trying to figure out. So if I look at just, just that, just on the upper right there, would it be correct to say that if I added one and two and compared it to four and five, I could see whether the, you know, like the president's favorability rating exceeds his unfavorability rating by taking, adding one and two?
Yeah, I'm with you. So there's a lot of discussion on how you correctly interpret this. So it is a standard way to look at, to, to measure someone's feeling about, about these things. Some folks will say, you should, you should do what you just described. Subtract the top from the bottom and ignore the middle. Some folks will say, split the middle in half, which is essentially you get the same thing. Or just look at the average. So there's different ways to look at it, but from my research, what you described is probably the most valuable way to look at it, to say, compare the not-half with the yes-half. And if you look at this, and it goes back to Chuck's point about aspirational, how familiar do we want people to be with how town government works? Well, about 50 respondents are saying they're very familiar. About, say, 60 respondents are saying, I'm closer to that end. 130 are saying, I don't know whether I am or I'm not. So that answers your question right there, that we can say from there over, people aren't real, saying they're not real familiar with town government. They're either neutral on that or no.
And you have 102 people who volunteer in town government, so you're saying half the people who volunteer still aren't familiar with town government.
No, and that's the, yeah, and so that's the kind of thing we should be looking at.
Important issue.
Yeah. And so there was another question, I don't, it's at the, in the index, but what's your appetite to learn more about how town government works? And would you spend time learning about that? It was overwhelmingly yes.
Yeah.
So we've got a pretty spread, as you'd expect, about how many children there are. There's a few people with more than four kids, God bless them.
Probably lied about that, too.
If they were kind of four kids, they didn't have time to fill out a survey.
Or they had all their kids fill it out.
Or they disowned them.
So, so the first question I, responses I want to focus on, and you can see, I put the number of respondents because some people could decide to not answer. So 417 people answered this question, and it was, do you support the Department of Revenue recommendation that Sherburne combine and appoint positions of collector and treasurer adopted by many towns similar to Sherburne? And we also within this put links to the reports, talked about the towns that, that have those similarities. So we try to provide resources for people who might be wondering. And you can see that 140 people were neutral on this, but the majority, well, I don't want to interpret it for you, right? I mean, it's, it's how, how you want to interpret it, but I know how I would read it.
So just, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get at. So I'm just trying to do the numbers, and I looked at not at all and number two, and I figured that's about 42 people.
Yep.
And then I look at number four and then the very category, and I figure that's like 250 people.
Yep.
Well, the other way to look at it is 350 people don't hate the idea.
That, yes, exactly the discussion you're having is, is how you gotta kind of think about it. It's not perfect. It's not a scientific thing at this point. It's, it's, it's directionally gonna tell you something, but it's, we can't say, okay, how would those 140 people who put middle of the road, how would they vote on something? I don't know. But maybe that says there's a lot of people that need more information. And that was one of the questions. We said, what additional information would you want on this topic? So we're gonna comb through that and try to make use of it.
Yeah, I mean, that's a pretty positive trend. I think you're absolutely right, though, the, how do you interpret number three? You know, what does mu mean? It's, but...
But even if everybody in category three voted no, there still would be more yes votes than no votes.
Right. Although, keep in mind, this is, so 14% is a, is a great response rate, but it's only 14%. And is the, are the people that responded to this representative of who would show up to vote, say? So that's another question. But again, the, the purpose wasn't to, the purpose was to understand, how do people feel about this topic? Because we based our warrant articles not just on how other towns look at, how our town officials look at, but we want to see, how do our townsfolk feel about those warrant articles? There does seem to be some support.
Yeah, and of the four warrant articles, this is the one that had the smallest percentage of the 486 responses actually responding. I mean, you had almost 17, 18% that didn't respond to this.
That's interesting as well.
So that's the highest non-responder article.
Yep. All right, so I'll move on to the next one. So quarterly property tax, so we'd asked a couple of times if there was any way to find out how many people actually pay their property tax through escrow, because that might be an impact to folks, right? If we, if we made this change. It's about 50/50. There are ways you can look at how it lines up against the age of the respondents, and it's that, I don't have it up here, but it's as you would expect, that the folks who are older, you might expect no longer have a mortgage, maybe, and therefore have more, no, I don't pay my, my mortgage, my tax or my mortgage escrow. But even given that, if you look at this question, based on your, your current understanding, how supportive would you be of shifting the quarterly tax billing? It's maybe not as strong as the one we just looked at before, but the favors outweigh the opposes.
Yeah, I count 192 on the right side and 80 on the left, and if you took all the undecideds and added them to the opposed, you would get to 260, which is more than the 192 in favor. So that means that the group in the middle needs to be educated, because if they all voted no, but as you say, this doesn't, doesn't necessarily reflect who are actually gonna vote.
So the, the next one, we, I'm kind of grouping together the IT and the HR topics. We didn't ask a specific question about, we hadn't formulated the art warrant article at the time specifically that we did the survey, but these are related, I think. So we asked a question, if we off, if the town offered these additional services, how valuable would it be to you? And you can see that people pretty strongly favored a single registration portal where they could make payments online, online secure access to their resident data, ability to make credit card payments online, and a little less positive, but still swaying positive for expanded office hours. Now, we didn't ask the question, how much would you pay additionally for these services? But there's an appetite, which would suggest that it's something that should be looked into. To look, to look into that, you probably need to have a strong approach to IT for one thing, right?
Of those four, though, the, in terms of the cost benefit, the value of expanded office hours obviously has the highest cost. The other three are fairly straightforward, I mean...
Depending upon how you handle it. You could split shifts. It's, it's not necessarily additional personnel.
Yeah, that's a, that's a fair point.
Or you shift the hours so that it's...
Yep.
This question was, how effectively does a town leverage technology and human resources? Again, people say they don't necessarily know how town functions, so this is coming from a position of people not really knowing how the sausage is made, but there is a perception that we don't do this well as a town. That's how I read this. How well do town departments continuously improve themselves to better meet your needs? This again is that, what would you want to see the result be? You know, maybe this is what we expect, right? We don't expect to have continuous improvement baked in, but that would be disappointing for me personally, I guess.
Why is that listed as IT and HR when the question seems to be much more general?
Because I was trying to call out the questions that had some relevance to that. So some of these certainly have more relevance. So how effectively is a town leverage technology? That's obviously relevant. How well do town departments continuously improve? I think that's tied to it. So we may internally already have the capacity to make improvements to our IT infrastructure, but we don't do it. So, so that implies that there's a structural problem, that we're not meeting the town's needs.
But if this...
Not, not just in the, in terms of the symptom, but in terms of the root cause.
If I may, Greg Kennon, a member of the, of the task force, the questions were not asked tied into the warrant article. The questions were just raw questions. Isn't that correct?
That's correct, yep.
So, somebody answering this wouldn't be thinking necessarily about a warrant article or any particular means to do anything about that. It was just a question of perception. I think when we put the results together or the presentation together, we tried to group it a little bit to show that this might have some relevance, as Adam was saying, to the warrant articles that we proposed, but that was not the way the survey was conducted.
So if we don't like the labels, we should blame you guys, is what you're saying?
Correct. Yes, and we also...
Yeah, me, not you guys, me, I made the slide.
We did a great job. We also didn't, we were trying to condense the presentation tonight and not show you everything.
Which I may have gone over my time, so...
Questions were still designed around the article?
No.
They were designed, well, so...
Not really.
It's a, it's an order of, the, the concepts that we were focused on led to these questions. The concepts that were focused on led to the warrant articles. So they're certainly related, but we didn't develop the warrant articles and then develop the survey and say, how do you feel about these warrant articles? But they're coming from the same source.
Well, that's very helpful to know that it's generic, because the next one, which says, how satisfied are you with the town's long-term financial planning and oversight of the budget? Even though it says IT and HR, this isn't, to the extent that this reflects some dissatisfaction, it's not dissatisfaction with IT and HR. It's sort of a general sense that the town, the town as a whole could do better in financial planning and oversight.
Right.
Because we, we don't even have an HR director, an IT director, or whatever, that anybody would be saying. They're not doing it. It's, it's that there's, I was just confused by the, by the...
I know, I apologize for that. I was, the, the only reason I did that was to try to say, these are topics that we're putting in as articles, the, and then there are questions that were answered that might have some pertinence to it, to be aware of. So...
They did it to simplify it so that I would understand it. Thank you.
I'm sure none of us saw the article numbers when we took the survey.
Yeah.
But I mean, this is relevant because if folks feel like there's not great oversight of the budget, an IT budget is probably a big piece of what we spend money, well, not a huge piece, but it's something we spend money on. So it's, I tried to figure out what I could pull into that part of the presentation that might have some insight for you as we go forward with these articles. And you could find that there's things I didn't include that might, you might find that are relevant. How satisfied are you with the town's use of your tax dollars? That might be just as relevant. I didn't think we had time to go through it, so...
So when you say structural, why are you saying that? What do you...
Me personally, is my opinion.
Well, would, would you describe these as structural problems? Because I, I don't necessarily describe them as structural problems, but what are you seeing?
Rather than a individual problem, like a lack of ability to pay by credit card, that's, that's a tactical issue, say.
I don't get it.
Structural would be, what's the underlying governance model that we've got? That what structure do we have that would either solve that problem or ignore that problem? So this, so how are we set up to handle those kinds of problems? So, you're leading me somewhere that I would be talking as my own personal, like not as a representative of the task force, but I would say... as a representative task force, but I would say, if we have folks who own IT, or own collection, or own whatever, it's already within the scope of their purview to handle that issue. So, we can make recommendations about an issue, like credit card payment, but really the advantage of having a task force look at governance is to look at root cause. And the root cause may be something not, something more structural or fundamental than, oh, we should have credit card payment. It may be, well, why don't we address those problems proactively? What is it about the structure of how we're set up that doesn't enable that? And I don't know that I have the answer to that, but...
So, we, you and I might want to talk offline a little bit, but I, I, I'm concerned, and I think I raised this the last time too, I'm concerned that if you put too many eggs in the structural basket, you can make those changes, and they might be beneficial changes, but they also don't solve your problem, because I don't think it's all structural.
I wouldn't argue that it's all structural.
Okay.
I just think that this points to the fact that there may be some.
I don't disagree, I don't disagree with you, but...
It's not the entire premise of any of the articles, right? It's just a takeaway, maybe, from some of the questions.
Yeah, I think, I think there are, right, I think there are multifaceted improvements needed, and some of them are structural.
When we went through, when we initially identified some of the issues that we thought were around, we came up with twelve issues, and those were basically, came out of our interviews that we did with all the committees and the departments in town. And we divided them up into three groups. One group was things that we thought were, could yield warrant articles at town meeting, because that was part of our mandate, that, and that happened to be four issues. The second group of four issues happened to be things that we thought were, didn't really rise to the level of town meeting consideration, and they were things that tended to be kind of under the umbrella of the select board, and we anticipate, and that you all can execute if you choose to, by, you know, independently, you don't need a supporting vote at town meeting. So, our intent was to send you all a letter, suggest recommending that these things be done. And then, our last group of four really are more overarching, long-term, big issues that we think are worth looking at, long-term, and also over time, that they're not one-time fix-type issues. They were things like communication between citizens in the town, and they were things like the educating people about how town, town government works, they were issues like morale, those kinds of things. So, not everything, you're sort of seeing one end of what we did, we've got, we've got a middle and another end. The name of our, of the committee was structural.
Well, this is terrific, I'm glad that at the prior meeting, we rescheduled this, because I don't think we had time to do it justice. Thank you, Aaron, and Greg, and Adam, and Corey, that, this is...
Can I just bring up one?
A wonderful summary, I had a quick question, are you, when we post this on the website, you're going to include the second half as well, with some of the more detailed questions that, Adam, you said you just didn't have time to summarize tonight?
So, my plan is to not post this, because of, the headings were made for your consumption. So, I'll have another version where each slide is each answer, and then I'm also going to post, post the raw data, in case anyone ever wanted to play with it themselves, we want to be transparent. And then, the third thing is the employee survey, I'll just be sending that to you, specifically not sharing that, obviously.
And I've forgotten, I'm failing your memory, who's your fifth member?
Patty May.
Patty May, of course, thank you.
I have one quick, wait, before you go.
Sure.
One question that was related to the last thing we were talking about, about the promotion of the town. This, I know you didn't get to it tonight, but that net promoter, well, how was the score of twenty-three? I don't, like, know that's, is that pretty bad, or?
You should have been in our meeting for that hour that I had to defend this metric. So, so, first thing is, that's more useful as a baseline that you would look at over time.
Okay.
But, I think there's some, some comparisons, some benchmarks there. So, Wells Fargo, last year, I think, had, got a negative four as a net promoter score.
So, you're a municipality, though, like, did you see?
I know, I know, so, so, there are a few...
Over is, I get it.
So, it's, again, it's directional, and there, I try to find if there are other municipalities that do this. Steamboat Springs does it, but they're a tourist town. So, it may not be a fair comparison, but in general, twenty-three's not great, right? Because it's, it says, how many people promote the town, and how many people would not promote the town, as, as they would recommend it as a place to live? And you can get up to a positive one hundred, so twenty-three, it's not that close to a hundred.
It might help you to think about it, because when Adam first explained this, I didn't get it. We had a long conversation. It's not between zero and a hundred, it's, it's between a positive one hundred and a negative one hundred.
Negative one hundred, right.
So, twenty-three is, is not in the bottom quarter, it's in the top half.
But you've got to be careful, because this net satisfaction score, it's about the structural government aspects, is no questions about, like, open space or schools, and people move here because of open space in schools, you know what I mean? If you incorporated questions along that, it would probably be, you know, twenty-four.
You should get a JD pair.
So, if I could, just to make one observation, and on a sort of positive note, there's a, a slide here that says, how satisfied are you with the overall quality of services and government provided by the town of Sherburne? And that's very strongly positive, it's like about two-ten to eighty. So, we're doing something right. From all of this, you might get the impression that this, that some issues with the town, but overall, this one shows, we're doing something right.
That's a great point, yeah. No, no intention to paint a negative picture here, just, there's some opportunity.
I think we have a volunteer for the Chamber of Commerce Promotion Committee. Thank you very much.
Bye.
Really helpful. Okay, um, I think I see language on the warrant article, but why don't we loop back to that in a second? The next item on the agenda is budgeting for leap year compensation. Sharon or David, who's leading this discussion?
I was just going to introduce it, that the, every year, there's a, there's an issue that comes up, not every year, every four years, there's an issue that comes up about compensation for a leap year, and it, it affects how we budget for the coming year. So, there are several ways you can do it, and the town, since I've been here in six years, has done it three different ways. So, two different ways, sorry. So, Sharon has been coming up with what, who would be affected by the way the calculation would go, and I think we've narrowed it down, that only the, we were only going to be affecting the contracted employees, so those with contracts would, they're, they're contracted for a year, regardless of the number of days.
Yes, that was the point of some emails that I had sent, I had, I had talked to people in other towns, and they say that if somebody is paid a hundred thousand a year, it doesn't matter whether it's a leap year, or it's not a leap year, or whether the calendar breaks in an odd way, if the contract says you get paid a hundred thousand a year, you get paid a hundred thousand a year. You don't add additional compensation to them, because they have to work this extra day on a, on a leap year day. Because the deal was that, that amount.
That's, that's, I think, there's a clear distinction here between a salaried employee versus an hourly employee.
Yes.
If you're a salaried employee, you have an annual salary, it is what it is every year. I mean, that's how it works in every private company, that's how, you, you either set an annual salary, or you work at an hourly rate.
Do we have any monthly, contracts with monthly salaries? My recollection, the ones I'm, that I'm thinking of are all annual salaries, but I would think the same logic would apply, if I'm being paid on a monthly basis, this may be irrelevant, I would think that if it includes twenty-nine days during leap year, not twenty-eight days in February during non-leap year, but do we have any monthly?
Either hourly or salary, I think.
Yeah, but, but even the salary is referred to in the personnel admin plan as salaried
employee for the week. It refers to the week, their pay for the week.
That's how you see it listed in almost any other community, it's always blank per week. A week's always seven days, a month's twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, a year's two sixty, uh, three sixty-five, three sixty-six, a week's a week, you get paid bi-weekly, it's always even, no matter what.
Right, and you just budget for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's an assumed forty hours on the, on those salaried people.
So, how, I'm most concerned that we present the budget at the annual town meeting that has the accurate number, how are, how are we presenting it, Sharon? How's it being accounted for within the budgets?
People that are contractual in salary, their annual salary will be increased by the COA, and...
Just, just COA, not adjusted for a...
But they're still paid weekly, so at some point, at the end of the year, they get a check that's slightly different to round off that year, you know what I'm trying to say? Because if they're getting paid, if every two weeks, they get a check, and that check is, you know, whatever, whatever those two weeks should be, at some point, that doesn't reconcile.
What we would do is we would take the total number of hours in a year that they're paid, and use their salary to divide that by hours that they're paid, and...
And you adjust that with the leap year, for the budgetary purposes.
Why aren't we doing it like private companies do, where I have an annual salary, I get paid, divide that by twenty-six, and that's my paycheck every other week?
Because that's not what we do.
Well, why, why not? That's what I'm saying.
Because we pay every two weeks, a company pays monthly.
Yes, no, my, no, they don't. Companies mostly pay every two weeks, and they pay...
So, we've had these...
You take twenty-six, there's fifty-two weeks in a year, so divide your salary by twenty-six, and that's what your paycheck is.
This doesn't even seem like a policy discussion, it's really just implementing what we've signed in contracts.
Right.
I've never seen a contract that talks about a weekly salary. We sign, we, we approve these contracts on an annual basis. Everybody, your, your contract, the chiefs, various contracts, it's, it's an annual salary, and then there's a percentage increase each year. And so, if the year has an extra day, you get paid the same, if the year has a less day, because there's a, the way the weekends fall, you still get paid the same. And you're not on an hourly basis anywhere, you're not getting overtime, I mean, it's not a...
Well, I think...
I don't, I don't think this is a policy question, and, and I, I, you know, this is not something that we have to decide, I think it's just a matter of law, you have, you can't pay somebody more than what they're contracted to make.
Yeah, the contracted people are, are the easiest ones to, there's, there's no recalculation of them.
Yeah, the hourly is a different story, then you're working hourly, and it's each day you work.
Hourly is always going to get paid for every hour they work, regardless.
But on, but on a year that has fewer weekdays, you're getting paid less, I mean...
But I don't think it's executed, I don't think at the end of the year, they trim a check to be a little bit smaller, you know, because at some point, you've got to make it up, so a point, line from between January one and December thirty-first, you get that exact pay, one hundred thousand, whatever it is, at some point, there's going to be an error at the end there, and your final check's going to be bigger or smaller to make it exactly one hundred thousand, I don't think that happens.
No, it's not.
What happens is typically, at most towns, the guy was, in a different town, was, nothing to do, is, not from Sherburne, was saying that if this, the guy's getting paid a hundred thousand in, in year one, and a hundred thousand in year two, and you get to that final week in the year, and there's two days of that week in one year, and three days of the week in the other year, you don't give him two checks, one for two days, and one for three days, you give him, you do bookkeeping, you allocate the two of the year, two of the days to that prior year's budget, and three of the days to the upcoming year budget.
And if their salary...
That's how they change each year.
But if the salary changed each year, then the three days would be at the higher rate, and the two days would be at the, at the original rate.
We can do that in our new system, but in the past, we haven't been able to do that, and a lot of towns do do that two-check thing, which doesn't...
But back to the leap year issue, though, even if it's, even if the salary doesn't change, if you still do that, and they get paid the same each week, at some point, they're going to make slightly more money on a leap year, they just are, more than a hundred thousand.
It's a daily thing, that's not a week.
No, they're not.
Well, what we had, what we were using before was an average of fifty-two point whatever weeks, and we're using that number every year. And some years, the town wins, some years, the employee wins, and that's what we had done a couple of years with no hiccups. And that was by council, had reviewed that.
So, what we do at, at, at a company that I'm on the board of directors of, is that we pay on the fifteenth, and we pay at the end of the month. So, in February, we pay on the fifteenth and the, and the twenty-ninth, and on December, we pay on the fifteenth and the thirty-first. And while each month may have different days, you get the same check on the fifteenth, and you get the same check at the end of the month. So, there are two checks a month, there are twenty, twenty-four checks, not twenty-six checks.
Right, that's, and that's the difference between being paid bi-monthly or every other week.
It's a lot easier to account for that, and I think Mike's brought it up a couple of times at, at different stages that we've been discussing.
We could do that, we could just pay twice a month to salaried employees, it would completely eliminate this issue.
Yes, I don't think bi-weekly is an issue, though, either.
Well, it's more math, is all this.
Divided by twenty-six instead of twenty-four.
It's, it's more arithmetic, not math, I mean, Darren, it's not that complicated.
I think what, where this also happens once every four or five years, is when there's twenty-seven, eight periods in a year versus twenty-six, and for the hourly employees, they're unaffected, of the salaried employees, it's the same issue. Their check each week, or bi-week, or month, not so much month, each week or bi-weekly, if that's how they're paid, is going to be a little bit less, but they're getting an extra check during the year. But in the end, if your salary's a hundred thousand dollars, in fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, you're going to make a hundred thousand dollars, whether it's twenty-six pay periods as a normal year, or in the one anomaly where this happens to be twenty-seven. So, just sort of the way, but I think, to answer your question, Slugg Johnson, Slugg Board Member Johnson, is I, my understanding is how it would be done here is sort of similarly, the, the, the regular amount would be a little bit less, because they'll end up being a fraction of an extra period.
That's a thing.
And in the year, they'll get paid the same, because there'll be a pay period that's sort of overlaps, and they'll get a couple of days under this rate, and three days under the, the higher rate next year, when there's not a leap year, by, you know, whatever, a few dollars or...
But on a leap year, that extra day, you get to pay the same every single week, you get paid that same, you will make slightly more on a leap year, I know you disagree, but if you think about it, you will.
No, you won't, because you're...
You have a contracted salary.
There's no leap week, there's no, like, twenty, eight-day week.
Because at the beginning of the year, you're dividing it by the one extra day, so each, each check is slightly less.
Right.
That's, that's the way it works.
Oh, so you're actually dividing, you're reducing the rate.
Well, it's not really a rate, it's a, it's a salary divided by number of days in the year.
Right, it's a division, and it's, it only applies to monthly and annual salaried employees.
I'm completely on, on, in agreement with George, where it seems like, almost even other municipalities I've seen, they actually say, if this is your thing, it's actually this much per week, you get paid every other week, you get the same every week, every week is seven days, to me, that's the simplest, it takes a little bit of math to budget it correctly, but to me, that's the absolute most fair.
We don't have contracts that do that, if we wanted to get to the point where we had contracts that do that, we could do it, but we don't.
We're free to talk in executive sessions, let's make it happen.
The accounting system breaks everything down to an hourly rate, no matter what, so it's a forty-hour assumed week for anyone with a contract.
You don't have an option of doing a salary rather than hourly?
Uh, it's a different way of doing, like, but it's like, you could do twenty-six paychecks in the amount, and you just put in one hour, and it generates that week.
Is there some requirement that there'd be twenty-six paychecks, or is it just the way it's always been done?
Well, we had fifty-two before.
There are ways to change pay periods, but there's notice that's involved in bargaining obligations for union employees.
We're not talking about the union people here, we're talking about salaried employees.
No, no, I'm saying, there are ways that you can change anybody's payroll, requires a minimum and certain amounts of notice, and if they're in a union, it would be a bargaining obligation.
Even if it's for non-bargaining unit members?
There's a, there's a notice period, I want to say, I want to say it's sixty days, but I, it could be sixty days.
We're only talking about the contracted employees, but my sense is that our discussion is very educated, but that mistakes get actually made in, in the process, that many people aren't aware of the fact, many, many financial people, and I'm, I'm not benching anybody in any particular town, but I've understood that across the state from time to time, people do actually get paid more because of mistakes being made, that there is a, a setup with, with numbers, and they get to the end of the year, and they pay extra amount of money because there are extra days, without realizing that should have been adjustments made along the way. And because all those mistakes get, then you get into a situation, well, I was getting paid this last year, and now I'm getting paid... was getting paid this last year, and now I'm getting paid that, and I, I feel hurt and, and injured. And you get all of this, and it all goes back to, to the math. If the math isn't done upfront, and it's not, it's not clear from the get-go, then these mistakes accumulate, and then they spread out over years. So if you look at somebody who, like over a five-year period, is supposed to be getting paid a hundred thousand a year, by the time you get to year five, they're actually picking a hundred and two, a hundred and three thousand. Again, because it's accumulated errors that just keep getting built into the system, in part because all, all of the math that we're talking about doesn't get done.
It should be very simple math. That's my whole point, is that in, anybody that's, I mean, any private company I've ever worked for, you take your salary, and you divide it by twenty-six, and that's your paycheck.
Yeah, I-
Every two, that's it.
And a lot of municipalities as well.
Like, that's, I agree with the comment that Mike made earlier. I, this is how we account for it, how we enter it. This is not the select board decision. This is just, this is an implementation, a calculation issue. Nancy, you had your hand up a while ago.
While Nancy comes to the mic, we should mention that, about the email that brought this up. And that's why, it was an email that Paul was sending as an advisory to Sharon. And that's how we got on the whole discussion about deciding to bring it to the meeting.
Right, and whether or not we should discuss it as an agenda item.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, just for, by way of explanation, I had been out because of a death in the family. And I came back, and I had some questions about how the budget was being calculated. I was addressing it to Sharon, but I was copying my colleagues because I wanted them to see what Sharon was saying. We'd all share the same information. And in the course of that, getting the information, and several of my colleagues weighed in with comments on what was happening. So we had three selectmen on the email trail. So now every time I send an email, I put in a, on it, "Do not reply." The, the whole point was so that whatever Sharon's answers were to my question, I had missed the meetings, I, I wanted to know how the calculations were done. So I put on every email, "Do not reply." The idea again was so that whatever calculations and explanations that Sharon had, all the board would know what information was being given to me. That was really why I caused this problem for everybody. And then when other selectmen-
I think the problem was caused when Sharon informed people that the selectman had directed her to do something. The selectman had not directed her to do anything, because we hadn't had a meeting, and we hadn't made a decision, and there's no decision to be made on how much you pay somebody. That's a function of their contract. We're not making that up on an ad hoc basis. And I know, I think David asked you to correct the record on that Sharon, but I don't know if you did, because I didn't see anything on that.
We haven't talked about it.
But that was not a direction from the selectmen on that issue.
Right.
Yep, the-
The reason there was a public information request was because it said that the select board was, I can't remember the exact wording. But I mean, I've done the same thing when I'm talking to people, and I say, "The board wants this or that," but now I know you-
I just don't think that was, I don't think that was an accurate description of what was going on.
It's a change in pay, what you're proposing to change in the way people are paid. Past practice was-
I don't think anybody had proposed anything. I think Paul had made some comments.
It's a change. It's a change in the way people are paid. I had to let them know. They couldn't use, I couldn't surprise them.
So what were you letting them know? It wasn't a decision. Who made a decision? How, how was that a decision? You got an email from Paul?
Yeah, he told me to change the way the budget for people's pay. I can't just change it and not tell them. That would be very-
No, I was reporting what another town said that should be done. I was just reporting information, what another town said. I could have taken it out of their financial statements or their annual reports. I was just conveying to you what another town said. That wasn't a direction that we had to do with the-
I'm conveying it, but I'm not gonna do it. I'm in conversation.
So you aren't gonna do it?
Yeah, not for everybody, just for the contracted employees.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But originally, I was told that there were gonna be seventeen people that were impacted, and now it's only four. But it's still, those people are being impacted because they were not paid that way for the last three years.
Four people who are on annual salaries.
Right, they were not paid that way. They were paid differently.
There's only four people in our town on annual salaries?
Um, they're contracted, yes.
No. We vote, we vote salaries at-
Don't we vote, don't we vote people's annual salaries at town meeting?
Or do we vote them as, as wage rates?
There are five non-union contracts under the town.
Okay. And, and when we vote on a, on a position at town meeting, if it's not a contract position, we're just voting on an hourly rate? That's what you're saying?
Yeah, you have to chase it down. You're not, you vote the salary line as one. And if you back it up, at some point, that salary line is built up of those individual sheets that attach to the budgets, and those are calculated down to the hourly level. So when the town meeting approves the salary line, they're basically approving it right, right down the line.
So maybe it should be clear at town meeting that they're approving an hourly rate instead of a, an hourly salary?
Yeah, to be clear, what town meeting's doing is appropriating money.
The budget. That's right.
Appropriating a certain dollar amount, which would mean that's-
They're not entering into contracts or anything.
Right, right. But you're, but you're voting a number. You're not voting, you're not voting an hourly number. You're voting-
That person could work one hour in the year, and still, that you've allocated fifty thousand dollars for their salary.
You can certainly provide as much backup and explanatory information, but what town meeting, old committee's doing is appropriating money.
Well, I kinda disagree with that. The law requires that the salaries of elected officials be set, S-E-T, by a town meeting vote.
Yes.
And the way that's set in most towns, and set here is, it's an annual amount.
I agree with you.
It's not an hourly rate.
I agree with you completely for elected officials.
That's what I was talking about. Because we set that-
I totally agree.
So then it's not contracted employees, it's contracted employees and elected people whose salaries are set?
Yes, because their, their salary is set at town meeting.
They're entitled to the full salary if they work one day in the year.
And again, I don't think the selectmen are making this up. I just wanna make sure we're doing what the law requires. That's it.
So-
Well, I guess what I wanna try is that the, that amount the elected officials are getting, that's in the warrant that you're all looking at, is based on the number of days in the year. And it has been ever since I've been here. I didn't, I didn't change this. It's a little bit longer than that. If you wanna change it-
Well, this is what I don't understand. So if we vote, an elected official's salary is a hundred thousand, they don't actually get a hundred thousand. They get, they get more because it's based on the number of days.
I decalculate that number. Their, their salary is based on the number of days that they work, and you vote on it.
So, so what the, I think the issue is this year, the elected officials' budgets are asking for more than the two percent increase because they wanna get paid for that extra day. That's the question. But I don't see why their salary should go up more, more than two percent when, and nobody else's is.
So it's not a question of calculating, it's a policy question about how much you wanna pay somebody-
It's a budget question for the different department.
It's a budget question.
It's a budget question, absolutely.
Those are annual, the elected salaries are annual salaries.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying. And they're saying this year, in their budgets, it was two percent plus an extra day for leap year. That's what they wanted a budget for.
And actually, it's two extra days because it's based on-
The number of workdays.
Right. Whereas, you would think, oh, no, no, no. I'm just saying, it's not a, it's, with elected officials, I would think you would wanna vote an annual salary, whether there's, I mean, are they paid, unless they wanna be paid hourly instead and track their hours.
Well, because I don't think, I don't think people who are on that system report their hours, do they?
No.
Okay.
But we're paying them for it.
In the budget process, we calculate the elected official's salary based on the number of days that they work in fiscal year.
So do you have warrants that show how many days have been worked, and how many hours have been worked?
Because if, are they, yeah, they count, are they accounting for those hours?
No, because, yeah, yeah, yes, yes, they are.
But that's not how, that's not what town meeting has voted. Vote, town meeting up to now, has voted a fixed dollar amount.
Exactly. Over the course of the year, that's exactly what they're getting paid.
And the question is, this year, they're budgeting more than the two percent increase because they wanna get paid by the-
No, I'm not, I'm not, I know, I don't care about what happened in other years. I'm talking about for twenty, twenty twenty.
Well, we should set a, set policy and say, this is the way that everybody should budget. And it should be a set increase, whether there's, you know, unless they wanna be paid hourly. You're either an hourly employee, or you're a salaried employee. That's the way the world works.
Nancy's been waiting patiently, then Jeff, and then Sean, but Nancy?
Well, there are a couple of things. This isn't just a leap year issue, because there are two hundred and sixty in some year, two sixty-one in others, and two sixty-two in others. And it, and this past year happened to be two sixty. And in the past years, our salary is determined by a rate that is, when we do salary surveys, go out to other towns, we don't look for the highest, we don't look for the lowest, we look for a medium rate. And, and then, because those are usually based on forty hours a week or thirty-five hours a week, they take that rate and multiply it times the number of hours in the year that you're expected to work. So if you're a twenty-four hour person or a twenty-seven hour person, then it's multiplied by that, and by the number of hours that are in that working year, whether they're two sixty, two sixty-one, or two sixty-two. And that way, a person gets paid for every day that they work. You've been using the term contracted and salaried interchangeably, and that's not true. We do have people who are salaried, but it's based on a, a rate. And when you ask someone to work extra days, you are lowering that rate.
Is it an annual rate, or is it an hourly rate?
It's an hourly rate that helps determine the annual salary.
But, so-
I don't think we've been using interchangeably at all.
I don't either. I, I think your statement is absolutely wrong. We're talking about whether or not somebody has an annual salary or an annual rate.
Okay.
It's annual-
But the way we get to the-
It's annual versus hourly.
But the way we get to the annual salary is we do salary surveys, and we take a rate, and we see what is expected of the people who work. And it's not just elected officials. There are people who are considered salaried that are not elected officials, and they're not contracted officials. So-
So that's, I don't think they're covered by this discussion, then.
Right.
Well, that's why I say there's confusion, because you use the term salary.
If you hire somebody for a hundred thousand a year, even if you don't have a contract with them, you're telling me-
Yeah, but your offer letters, your offer letters go out with a rate. We hire you at, just like the last, the treasurer was just hired, she was hired at a rate. Sharon was hired at a rate.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. The treasurer, that was an, that's an hourly position. It's paid hourly. It wasn't salaried. But for salaried people, when we hire them, we say that you're being paid X amount, which is based on a expectation of a forty-hour work week.
The question is whether it's an annual rate or an hourly rate.
Well, when you voted at town meeting, it is the annual rate for that year, but the way that, that salary was determined was by deciding what a fair rate was. And that's what is used, whatever it is you've agreed upon, or what personnel has decided your number of hours should be per week, and how many hours there are in that particular work year. When I first started working here a hundred years ago, they used to do what you said. They had a paycheck every, no matter what, and you got to the end of the year. And there were a few days difference. And, and every so often, the accountant would ask you to wait another week for your paycheck. In other words, they made up the days that you had accumulated over the years that were extra in that year, and they, and they had paid you for, because they had even paychecks. Now we don't do that. We pay, as you said, if there are three extra days in the year, then they get calculated at the rate that year, and then the rest of the week gets calculated, or the rest of the two-week period gets calculated at the higher rate. But for all of, if you look at our budgets, they come out, the sheets that we submit, for everybody has the, I don't know about the contracted people, but for everybody, whether they're considered salaried, or whether they're considered hourly, has a rate that is used to calculate what will be budgeted for your salary. And you don't get more than what's budgeted, but what is budgeted pays you for the hours in the year that you're going to work for the next year. And when you do it the other way, you're dividing, and, and we did that for a while, but when, a few years back, it was corrected. We would be told that we were going to get a certain rate, and, and it would be two sixty days, and then when it was two sixty-one or two sixty-two, they would take that, and they would say, okay, instead of dividing it by two sixty, divide it by two sixty-two. And there was a lot of unhappy employees, because they realized that they were working one or two days for nothing. So I'm, I'm asking you to please go to the, to the way we've been doing it, where people will be compensated for the time that they work. Whether you call them salaried, or you call them hourly, whatever it is, that, that number that you vote at town meeting is the number that they get paid. But the way you arrive at it is that you go by a rate and the number of hours that are expected for that employee to work in the year.
Then their hours should be tracked.
Well, most hours are tracked, even if they're called salaried. They have to enter into a pay sheet every two weeks, what their hours, what their sick-
It's a salary.
What their sick time is. Those people don't have the latitude to be able to not come into work when they don't want to, or take extra vacation days, or take extra six days, even if they're called salaried. They-
I've never seen, I, I don't know if other municipalities do it this way, but a salary is a salary, is a salary, and you don't get it paid extra because there's one extra day that year. That's, that's, it's absurd to me, to be quite honest. It's a budget increase of two percent COLA should be two percent over your salary from the last year. A year is a year.
For people who are receiving annual salaries.
Salaries, yes.
Or monthly salaries.
Or, yeah, or-
Or contracts, yeah.
Or contracts.
And if you're an hourly employee, you track your hours, and you get paid for the hours that you work.
I've attended every town meeting for, as a selectman, for twenty years and before that. And I never recall understanding that the number I was voting for the salary of an elected official was anything other than an annual salary for that elected official. I didn't-
Then you've never looked at the budget sheets. Because it's clearly on the budget sheets.
We talked about it four years ago on advisory, and I thought it was ridiculous then, that somebody wants an extra pay day when there's, you're a salaried employee. In the, everywhere else in the world, you're a salaried employee. You have a hundred thousand dollars this year, next year, you're gonna get a hundred thousand plus two percent.
I couldn't agree more. But I got a contract a year and a half ago, and it was a dollar amount, plus COLA, plus COLA, for the next two years, my contract.
Mm-hmm.
By grade, it's based on eighty hours every two weeks. On that sheet.
See, that, now that-
On that sheet. That's how they calculate it.
Okay.
So it wasn't exactly a two percent increase. So what you're doing now, different than what you did last year. And it always has.
But that's why-
I did not get exactly two percent on the annual salary.
But that's why I asked-
You should have then. It's being calculated.
And the hourly rate.
It's being calculated, Ron.
And then there was an extra day.
You're, you're a contracted employee, so you should be paid exactly what it says in your contract.
I work three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I agree. It doesn't matter.
Right. But you should be paid exactly how it's written in your contract.
But because of this confusion, is, is why I asked another town, I asked another town, a lot bigger than, than Sherburne, how they do it. And this is not how it's done.
But Paul, in your email, you said some towns choose it to do to the benefit of the town, and other towns do it for the benefit of the employee. And I think that we're big enough that we can do what's right, and pay people for the time that they work. And I think that that's the fair way. Next door, they're getting a three percent raise. The other side, they're getting two and a half percent raise. Little town like Hope Dale, they're getting a three percent raise. Nobody complained about a two percent raise here. There was a year they took a zero. And because everybody got the zero, nobody complained. We have never overpaid or gone for the top of the line here. I think in fairness, we should pay people for the time they're expected to work. And when we promise them a rate, and a lot of work goes into determining those rates, David spent a lot of time on it. We've done salary surveys, we've compared ourselves to the MCTA and to the MMA, and we've determined what is a fair rate for people to work. And I think that we should be big enough here to do what is right, not what we can get away with.
Nancy, it's the way things are done, though. It's an annual salary.
I don't care how they're-
It's an annual salary.
You're wrong. That annual salary is determined by a rate.
I'm not, no, it's not.
It is.
It's determined by a dollar amount, set at town meeting, and you get paid that, divided by twenty-six.
That's right. And the number you vote on at town meeting is determined-
All you're asking for, Nancy, is more than two percent for twenty-twenty, is what you're asking for.
The way the salary is determined by a rate.
Nancy, yes, you're asking, so we're saying, your salary in two thousand nineteen was X. You're asking for two percent- You're asking for 2% plus a little extra than the 2%. That's what you're asking for.
No, I...
Yes, yes, it is. Because you have an annual salary set.
1.8% or whatever it is in...
You're asking for 2% plus percent increase.
If that were true, and we never changed the rate that determined the salary, I would be making a pittance compared to what the growth has been in everybody else's...
I'm just, I'm saying, you're asking for more than a 2% in 2020.
And what I'm saying is your way of calculating is not fair to the employee when they are paid by a rate.
The way it's calculated everywhere.
It's not the way it's been calculated here. And it's not the way it's calculated everywhere. Our, our salaries are determined by a rate. And we go out into the community surrounding to find out what a fair rate is.
We used to make this up for 29, we had February 28th holiday.
Nancy, I couldn't, I couldn't disagree with you more. In terms of hourly employees, there is no intent, no effort, if somebody works an extra day and they're paid on an hourly basis, to get paid for it. It's required by statute, state statute. And to my knowledge, we've never done it any different way. The only thing that we're talking about is people who have annual salaries and elected officials. I think we're talking about, and of how many people, David, five contract?
Five contracted, yeah.
And how many elected officials have annual salaries? We have...
Four, three, three.
And that's the end that we're talking about. We're talking about eight people.
No, you're, no, you're not.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
The question is...
Then don't call the rest of them salaried.
Could you state who those are, who those people are?
The positions, not the names.
The positions, treasurer's one.
Of the elec, the elected?
Treasurer, treasurer, town clerk.
Collector and town clerk, right?
Yeah.
And the contractor's...
CM and D, chief of police, soon-to-be DPW director, chief of police, chief of fire...
Town administrator.
Town administrator, and I'm blanking on the third.
Lieutenant. Pine Hill principal.
And what about, yeah...
I'm having a Rick Perry moment.
Pine Hill principal, right? Is she a...
She's contracted, but not, it's through the...
Through the school committee.
The lieutenant.
Oh, lieutenant.
Yeah.
Yeah. I gotta say, when I...
And how many other salary that we consider salaried employees are, are there? How many others that we...
Non-contract salaries, employees that were...
Considered salaried persons? Are we not, is Diane not considered a salaried person? Even though she doesn't have a contract?
There's probably 20, 23, something like that.
Salary.
That's an hourly basis.
If their sal, salary is set, their, their salary is set at a town meeting, correct?
All of our sal, all of the money that is paid is set at town meeting.
Correct. You're allocated, you're allocating the money at town meeting. Now, we're budgeting for 2020, and this is when the question comes up because they want, we've set, or advisory said 2% increase. And you're saying, well, we want 2% plus because there's an extra day.
Not to jump on this.
It actually came from advisory, though it comes in the sheet.
I know, but I'm not saying maybe advisory was wrong. I'm saying it should be, if it's a 2% increase, it's a 2% increase. That's my argument, because that's how it works everywhere else.
Just waiting very patiently.
I have two comments, one on this sort of narrow ratio of calculation and another on clarification on town meeting. So, well, I've worked two Fortune 100 companies. And what they do is they, a lot of companies impute an hourly rate. Even if you're a salaried official, they impute hourly rate for certain things. It could be if you have a sick day or some special benefit or short-term disability. Do impute or calculate an hourly rate, even though you're an annualized employee. So what most, the two companies I've worked for that are very large companies, they calculate it based on you working 365.25 days a year. So they average out the four-year cycle of one leap year. So they take 365.25 days a year in a year, and they calculate it. And then they divide that by 26, if there's 26 peak years in the year. So they actually cause it to be levelized over a four-year period. So they calculate the imputed rate, but they add in the leap year and then divide it over four years. That's how they do the calculation. One thing I want to correct is that we no longer, and we can validate this. I believe we no longer vote on the salary lines now in the budget. We changed that one or two years ago. We now vote just on the budget for each department. We used to say X dollars for salary, X dollars for expenses. But we've changed that now, so we're not technically voting a salary line. In other words, people can see it, it's printed there. But what we act, you know, how town meeting is, and here can help me here, we're voting on the motion. The motion is a dollar amount for that department. We don't vote on the salary line.
That's illegal for elected officials. You have to vote the salary of elected officials.
We don't, we don't, we vote a department's budget. So it may include elected officials, but it's a department for the town treasurer, which includes all the costs for the treasurer's department.
He always asks her to...
In the article, at least every article I've seen, the two marks that I've seen has the same language in it, the talk of fixing the salaries and compensation of all elected officers. So you are, when you're moving that article, one of the things you are doing is fixing the salaries of the elected officials. Maybe just writing the word.
Yep.
We go down the line, we go down through each department, and we only state now, two years ago, we stated salaries and expenses. Now we only state total budget for that department when we go line by line.
Jeff, the, the private companies that budget at 365.25 days a year, I would submit are violating a Massachusetts state statute. It's affectionately known as the Simon Legree law that says that if I'm an hourly employee and I work an hour, I get paid for it. So that screws employees who work that, the, a leap year. They work that, the extra eight hours that day. But by amortizing it over four years, by doing the .25 calculation, I'd submit that that's a violation of, it's a very, it's a very simple principle. If an hourly employee for Sherburne works the extra day of leap year, they get paid for it.
But Jeff didn't say it's hourly. He says they do it for salary employees.
Oh, you're talking, are you, I'm sorry, you're talking to...
Salary people, but they calculate, for salary people, they calculate as...
Fine. It's an imputed, like they use it for, right.
And they divide it over the...
I, I, I thought you were talking about people who are hourly rate employees.
They, companies, even if you're salaried, do you use an hourly rate sometimes in terms of what you do for reasons? Can you calculate payroll for doing what Nancy mentioned, which is benchmarking salaries? I guess in town sometimes it's more useful to do that on an hourly basis.
Right. And then you get paid for the 40 hours every single week.
They, when they do the recent .25, then it does even out over the year. You're spreading out over, you're putting the leap year in that calculation.
For annual, monthly salaried individuals. Nancy?
My point was not for the elected officials, but for the people that we consider salaried gets lumped under this. And I think that because we back into those salaries, those are not voted individually by the elected officials. But the, we have a lot of people that are considered salaried. And I use Diane as an example. I have assistants, and there are other assistants around that are considered salaried. Those salaries are determined by an hourly rate. And, and to ask them to work two days without pay just does not seem...
Did anybody say that? Nobody said that.
Well, you know, in my business, if I hire a receptionist at, at a hundred grand a year, I don't...
I have my resume.
That's gonna be cut out when they...
However many days they work, right?
I can do 60 words a minute.
But the point I wanted to make is that what you said, Jeff, suggests to me that advisory committee has got the wrong motion at town meeting. Because whatever it does to other departments for elected officials, you have to state this, you have to set and fix the salary of elected officials. So for those three departments, there has to be a line item with a specific item for the elected official.
I think it's in the written word, but I don't believe that's what's read. What I'm distinguishing...
It has to be in the motion.
I think before your motions are any, it's gonna be...
It's a footnote in, in Article 3 or whatever the omnibus budget is, I believe. It is. I may be wrong.
Okay, so whatever that number is, that's the number that should be paid to the elected official. I want to see them get paid every dime of that number that's voted by town meeting. I don't care if they get one check for it or they get 100 checks for it, but no more.
That's what, the question is the budget for 2020.
I'm just telling you that the way that number is calculated and has been calculated since I've been here is that the budget process takes a person whose hourly rate increases by 10%, this is just the way it's been done. I've been following what was done in the past. I didn't make any changes.
But you're taking the hourly rate times 2% times a different number of hours each year.
Yes, exactly.
With that number...
Exactly what happens.
And that's what we're doing.
Nancy makes every...
I have no idea that was going on.
It's not a kindergarten.
And I bet you most voters didn't know what was going on. And I, I would like to see going forward that, you know, whatever's done in the past, that we don't do that, that we set a salary. And, and that for the transition year, I mean, if, if they need more money next year, give them more money. So I don't want to see anybody damaged by it.
If we transition next year, it'll be better because people will have two extra days in a day. Do that, transition next year.
Yeah. You're changing on an up year, not a down year. Because one year, you're gonna go over 2%, the next year, you're gonna go under.
Well, it should just be a 2% increase every year or whatever we, whatever's set by the Personnel Board. If it's a 1.5, if it's a 3, if it's a 2, that's, should be the increase, not 2.15 because there's so many days in a year.
Right. I just need people, employees need to be able to sit down. And that's the first thing they'll do at the beginning of the year, is look at their check to make sure it's being calculated at the hourly rate. And they'll go to their last hourly rate and add 2% to it. And if they're not equal, there's gonna be a problem.
Well, in terms of what, how it's described in the, in the warrant and the budget, we can certainly raise that at the joint meeting with the advisory committee. I just think it's gotta be clear to voters what they're voting on. And if we're dropping a footnote, which gives the annual salary, that may be sufficient. How are we proposing now, I guess this is a question for you, Sharon, for advisory, to account for leap year compensation for elected officials and end of the salary?
Contracted.
And contracted...
In the 2020 budget.
In the 2020 budget.
So only contracted employees and only elected officials?
Well, the contracted employee should be whatever it says in their contract. That's, that's an easy number to calculate, I would imagine, right? I'm saying, any other salaried employee, is there increased 2% or 2% plus?
Well, hang on, George, though, I think Chuck's asking a different question. Chuck was asking a specific question, I think, about contracting and elected officials, right?
Right.
Because that's not, that's, that's not a discretionary issue, from what I can tell.
Right, no, contract is a contract.
And, and, and as Paul said, elected official salaries are set.
By whatever they budgeted. That's my question, is are they budgeting 2% increase or are they budgeting a 2% plus increase?
Well, I think they have 2% plus because of the number of days a year. Just because that's the way it's always been done. I mean, it's not right.
So why don't we do, let them do that this year and then stop it? And just do it by the book, the way other, the big towns and cities do it.
I would like...
Rather than this sort of ad hoc Sherburne way. That gives people a year to figure things out. Nobody gets hurt this year.
I, yeah, what, I mean, we, we can't do that with contracted employees. I'm not sure why we would do it with elected officials. I mean, no, no disrespect, Nancy, I know you work hard, but we're not, we don't have hourly workers who are elected officials. Nobody's reporting their hours. There's no, I mean, we, we have one elected official who has thought about whether their office is open certain days. It took, it took years to even get them to open for the convenience of the public. I, I think they're salaried employees, they have the discretion to open their office, not open their office, come to work, not come to work. They just have to get a certain amount of work done during the year. It's not the same thing. I agree.
Corey, you got it?
I, I was just gonna ask a question, that if, if the, whatever percentage COLA is and then a plus for leap year, is the following year, does the plus get deducted?
Should.
Yes, it does. By this method, it gets deducted.
That shouldn't be happening either. Not with, I mean, it can happen because we can set the budget. But what that means is you're getting less of a percentage increase than the hourly workers are, which doesn't make sense.
Makes it way more complicated process. It's gonna all even out with, if you do a 2%, flat 2% increase each year. That would be a much simpler process.
The increase isn't on the rate, it's on the number of days. It's 54.2 or 54.25.
Should be on the dollar amount. If it's a hundred thousand dollar salary, you should get a 2% increase over that, 102,000 the next year.
You were saying it's 2% plus.
Well, I'm saying you should, that the plus and the minus is making it more complicated than it needs to be. So in a year, next, so next year, you're gonna still get a 2% increase, but maybe it's two days less. So in the end, it evens out, and you're doing way more math than you need to be. It's two, if it's, whatever the COLA is each year, it's much more simple.
And there's nothing tough about adding to the week since you get paid contents or inforants depending on whether there's one or two...
Just because we've always done it some way, doesn't mean we need to continue to do it.
Shame on me for not knowing that when the advisory was saying we're giving a 2% increase, you're actually giving a 2.2.
No, we talked about it four years ago, we've talked about it this year, and...
I, I, I thought all the salaries, when we said we're giving everybody a 2% increase, the salaries...
She talked about it in this meeting.
In this meeting?
Yeah, she's talked, we've talked about it in here, yeah. That it was, this year, there was a larger than 2% increase because of the leap year.
In this meeting, I'm talking about voting at town meeting in the past. I always understood, when you were on advisory, when I was on advisory, we would tell the voters, we're giving everybody a 2% increase. And everybody would vote the numbers. Nobody actually sat down and did very complicated, no voter did that.
Not at town meeting, but at all the advisory hearings, and we did. We talked about it for hours four years ago, right, Jeff?
I would suggest is, this seems like a Personnel Board issue to me. It's not really an advisory issue. We're looking at the overall budget, what the town can afford at a macro level. It seems to me, I like Paul's suggestion about going with the way we're doing it for this year, but I would counter what you said and maybe ask the Personnel Board to do a little benchmarking study of other towns so we have a factual basis if we're gonna make a change.
That's a good idea, Jeff. I think the person...
Actually, I'm not sure I completely agree with that. I entered into a contract with a chief of a department for X dollars. I don't care what the comps are. I've entered into a contract with you, Jeff. You've gotta live by it, I've gotta live by it. And whatever COLA you get is fine, but it's an annual salary. If you come back to me and say you want additional money because it's a leap year, I say, read your contract. You're a mind reader.
What I'm suggesting is that it's just an accounting issue, but maybe we can do a benchmarking study and find out how other towns account for that. I agree with the concept that you have an annual salary, but it'd be interesting to find out how other towns handle it.
I think it's a fiduciary issue, too. If we've got a contract with somebody and we're spending town money, I, I don't think we can interpret it in, you know, a favorable way to pay them more than what the contract calls for.
Yeah, I just, I think it's just a calculation issue. I don't really think it is a legal issue. I know it can appear that way. I don't think it is, though.
The contract employees, frankly, I think are a bit more black and white. I think it's the elected and the at-will salaried.
I'm sorry, Eric, can you repeat that?
I think contract employees are pretty black and white. I think many people are in agreement there. But I think it's the, um, the elected and the at-will salaried, which are the kind of variables in here.
Yeah, but the at-willed ones, I don't think, I mean, maybe George is on that. I don't think I've heard others up here worried about the at-will salary ones because those all reduce to hourly rates.
No, and at-will, that's what, I'm talking about the at-wills as well. I think it should be, they're, they're adjusting all those for leap year as well.
Yeah, that should not be adjusted for leap year, and that's my opinion, at least. An at-will salary employee, you owe them a certain amount of money per days they work, however you calculate it out, we're kind of backwards doing it into this hourly accounting mechanism. mechanism, and that should not be adjusted for the year. If they make a little bit more money at the end of the year, they're still an at-will employee and it's still a salaried. And I still hold the opinion that salary employees are based on a weekly pay because seven days never changes. And it'd be consistent with that.
I think you guys are saying too, you're saying the exact opposite.
Yeah, I agree.
George and Eric, you guys are saying the exact opposite.
We are saying the exact opposite. I don't think it should be adjusted for the leap. The hourly rate should not be adjusted for leap year for an at-will salaried employee. The contract employee, I get.
No, I'm not saying that either. I'm saying at-will, that should also be a 2 percent increase.
And he's not saying that. He's saying, he's saying that if there's an extra day in the year, then they should get paid for it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I think it's consistent with what Chuck talked when they'll state law.
So and...
Just to go back to what I think said much earlier, when the first email discussion came out, it was like, you guys aren't making the decision, right? You had a discussion, you weren't making the decision. Whose decision is it? We're having a lot of discussions...
Town meeting. Well, there's two, I think there's two things going on, Adam. I think there, we have contracts with people. And to me, there's not a decision, I disagree with Jeff, there's not a decision about how to pay under the contract. We have to pay what the contract says. And then we have people who aren't on a contract. And that is a town meeting decision about how much to pay and the selectmen make recommendations on that. But I don't see anything that Paul was doing was a recommendation on anybody other than the contract employees, but maybe I misread what he was doing. You know, as far as the elected officials go, thinking a little more about it, I mean, I agree with George, it's 2 percent plus, but there's nothing that keeps the town from paying 2 percent plus if that's what the town wants to do. I think with, I think with the contract employees, there is something that prevents us from doing that, which is that the contract doesn't say that. But, but with the elected officials, it's just a policy question.
Yeah, I like... It's a communication thing, right? Like that the town might not know that that's what's happening.
That's what I've been trying to say repeatedly. I did not know when I voted for salaries for elected officials, that it was 2 plus something, because I would hear advisory saying it's going to be a 2 percent increase for everybody who wasn't under a collective bargaining agreement. So I would go and vote that happily, not realizing that it wasn't a 2 percent, it was 2 plus...
In a leap year.
Point whatever. So I feel like if we're going to do that, there's, there's nothing wrong with giving extra money to elected officials. I mean, they're, they're worth their weight in gold. If town meeting wants to pay them a million dollars each, that's up to town meeting. But just town meeting needs to know it.
Right.
We don't want town meeting thinking they're voting a $50,000 salary and it actually turns out to be a million dollars. It's got to be fully disclosed so everybody knows this is what it actually means.
So how does it get communicated back to the town that for years, X was happening? And I don't know what it amounts to, like how much money it amounts to.
Yeah, it's got to be clearly communicated, understood at town meeting. I agree with you, Mike, completely in terms of contracted employees. I entered into a contract with my boss. If I went to him and said, next year's a leap year, I want some extra money, I have an annual salary. He or she should laugh at me. But for elected officials, it's a matter, if we, I think Paul's recommendation of going forward with how we've done it in the past, I'm fine with that. I think the next leap year, we may or may not want to change that, but I completely disagree with doing that with contracted employees.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I agree. A contract's a contract. That's, I mean, there's no question of how we treat those. All right.
But we have been on the omnibus budget, but it does list the elected official's salary. And that's been what's been sufficing for setting their salary.
Yeah, I think Corey's right. I think it's been typically dropped as a footnote, hasn't it?
But you don't, you don't see...
For the elected officials, is that? Your memory, Nancy, as well? Yeah.
You would have to go to the pay sheet in the budget and the actual budget development process to get down to the, whether it was two or not.
I think advisors' report has got to say, everybody's getting a 2 percent pay increase, but elected officials have that adjusted upwards because there's an extra day.
But, but I think what Nancy was saying was something that's, that's worth noting, which is that if, and if it's true, if these, if these annual salaries had been reduced from a budgeting standpoint to an hourly number so that in a year with fewer days, they don't quite go up to 2 percent or they don't quite go up to whatever the, the flat rate is, then if they go up more in the leap year at an hourly basis, it's not such a big deal. We may want to make it eventually work out so that it's just a straight salary. But if it's been fair in the past, then it doesn't matter if it's fair today. And I think Sharon was saying something similar to that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know that to be true or not true, but, but I do understand now where the reduction to an hour, you know, the, the division down to an hourly rate can work out favorably or unfavorably. I think from a policy standpoint, it's bad to have these ups and downs also. And so over time, we ought to figure out how to not do it. But it's not, it's not unfair if we've been doing it and it's actually worked both ways. It's only unfair if it's a one-way ratchet.
Right. So that's what he said, by doing it in 2020, that's probably the fair way to do it.
I think that's what Paul said, yeah.
The year after, start doing it as a flat every year.
But I, just a point of clarification, I think if you look at the town reports over, let's say, a 10-year period, the salary of elected officials have gone up every year. And so to say that some years have they gone down because there wasn't any...
No, I don't mean down, Paul, but they've got, if it's been a 2, if the rate's been 2 percent, but they've only gone up 1.9 because there was a less of a day, then that's fair. If it hasn't happened that way, then it's not fair to only get the benefit of the up years and not the loss of the down years.
Right. That was the point that Sharon was making, yep, yep.
And you, you say it has been done that way?
It has been done.
Yeah, okay.
And then I think, like you said, going forward, there's no reason we can't change to leveling it out after, give them the benefit of the leap year in 2020, but then after that, level it out.
Last year, there were two, 2,080 hours. This year, there's 2,096. So last year was us, two days less.
Yeah, I'm, and I'm quite comfortable this should be an accounting and advisory issue.
Yeah.
Except for people who are contracted with annual salaries. I have a fundamental problem with that. I don't know if this requires any...
No, I don't think, I think everybody's reasoning, I think that's a very straightforward thing. If somebody's in a contract, they're contracted.
I don't think it's a decision. It's not...
It's not a decision.
Exactly. I...
That's why I, when, when there were emails about it, I didn't, never looked at it as a decision. We weren't deciding anything. We'd already entered into those contracts. Have to pay people what the contract says.
I think Corey has something to add.
My only suggestion would be, however it works out, is that when you do the footnote, and I, and I think that comes out of your office, the omnibus budget, that in the footnote, I would absolutely guarantee that nobody on the floor of town meeting understands. They just see that number and they don't know where it came from. But I think you ought to add that there's additional money in the, it's, it's the 2 percent COLA plus the leap year pay. So people understand where the numbers go.
And that, Corey, that, from the beginning, that's been the issue I'm most concerned about. I want people voting at town meeting, understanding what the number is and where it comes from. That's just...
Yeah, I mean, whatever. We don't...
Move on. Yeah, have we, have we beaten that issue to death?
Our chair, our chair can't seem to get stuff done in an efficient way. I don't know.
It's the person sitting to my left. That's the, okay. Where is the agenda?
Here, Chuck. Yes, thank you.
You want to do that or the finance? Let's, let's do the warrant. Darren, what do you got for Article 13?
To see if the town, I try to write it as broad as possible, despite I think some particular issues that will be hatched out. But to see if the town will go to the steps in relation to the general law, chapter 44, section 55c, creating an affordable housing trust, creating a board of trustees, which raises appropriate a transfer and available funds, including but not limited to rescinding or authorizing prior appropriations, the sum of money to be placed in the trust or to any other action or initiative.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds great to me.
So the only thing that's been talked about, and Paul, there was a lot of talk about reviving the corporation. But why would, why would we need... We don't have to vote to authorize them to do that, do we?
I would say, I would like to make a motion to include Article 13 in the warrant. And with the language, once we, starting with the language that he just read, knowing that it, there's chance, at least we have something in there, knowing that between now and...
Okay, but this, this warrant is going to be printed between now and the 14th for the advisory hearing, right?
Right. And, but articles have changed.
We're not going to see, we're not going to see anything between now and the 14th. So if we're voting to put this language in for the warrant that's on the 14th, I mean, the warrant that's heard on the 16th, that's fine, that's fine with me. But we should vote to put something in, not, not leave it open.
Right.
Okay. So I would, I would second George's motion to include, to include Article 13 and friendly amendment to have it read as, as Darren, yeah.
Ask Darren, right.
Any discussion up here? All in favor of the motion?
You okay with this, David? Do you look... Yeah, that's great. No, I was wondering, do you want me to go down and edit it now and sign it? Do we have to sign it physically?
Yes, you have to sign it.
I'm sorry, have we had a motion to approve all the rest of the, I thought that was just...
Can we come in and sign a warrant, like?
Yeah, we can. We can vote, we can vote.
You guys have it ready, then we can each come in and sign it.
We can vote to finalize the warrant and then we can come in and sign it. Okay. So once we make the edits, then I'll circulate it.
Yeah.
And then send your comments directly back to me if there are any corrections that you see.
We can't.
There's no more comments other than typos.
Send them to him.
Other than typos, David.
We're going to vote to issue the warrant essentially, and then we come in and sign it. We can't authorize you to make...
I'm just... He's talking about, he's talking about, he's talking about spelling, you know, he's talking about spelling mistakes, Paul, or if he numbers it and skips a number, you know, whatever. That's it. Or use the same article number twice. That's happened before.
Because remember, we took out 22.
But that made it all the way to town. Yeah, okay.
George's motion is only for Article 13, right? We've not voted on the rest of the articles.
Right, now we need to make another...
Good. I just want to make sure that, I would move approval of the warrant, all of the warrants, including, we already approved Article 13 for the 2019 annual town meeting.
We move approval, approval in terms of finalization of this warrant?
Yeah, finalization, not approval, not endorsement of the articles.
Not endorsement of any of the articles.
Right. Just an approval of the final warrant.
Second.
Discussion? Need all in favor?
Okay, good.
Terrific. Sharon, when we were doing the updates, we skipped...
Quick work, Darren.
Yes, thank you.
It kept you busy while you were sitting here not doing anything, too. That was good.
Getting our money's worth.
I gave you a billable five minutes.
Billable hour.
Five minutes. Okay, Sharon, Finance Director report?
Well, I just, you know, like I said before, really engaged in the whole budget process, advisory. We're meeting Monday night. We're going to really try to, try to nail down and get that, get the budget under control. So that's, that's what's, you know, that's what's consuming all my time lately.
I think in future years, I think maybe we should try to do a calculation of the tax rate as early as we can.
Yeah.
So we kind of have an idea of where we're at. I know it's hard because it changes a lot, but at least, I think it's, if you're putting it into a model, hopefully we can do that and say, if this is the budget that comes in, this is how high our tax rate's going. It just is a good barometer. I know there's moving pieces that it can still shift, but I think we could at least have something.
Yeah, I actually added a whole tab. So every time we change, a number changes, it changes the tax rate. So it's, it's all built in. So, yeah, that's a really good...
We've been doing it since day one.
Yeah.
Well, the tax rate? The tax rate?
Yes.
Yeah, the models of all.
Well, no, no, they haven't because a few weeks ago, you said, we're not going to have any tax. And this is, one of your emails said, based on this budget, we're not going to have any tax increase. And then a few weeks later, it was...
Well, no, we, that's because there were, there were some adjustments that were put in that lowered.
Right.
So, but, but, yeah, we're calculating the tax rate every, every time there's a change.
George, when you talked before about the tax base going down, right, the, the...
Assess...
Assess values. So is there going to be a reassessment? Is that what you're talking about? How do we know those, well, how do we know those are going down then?
Well, it was based on looking at, it was a, I think it was a discussion with the, I think when I talked to Steve, we were, we looked at a...
But they don't go down automatically.
No, no, I know that. I'm saying, we're saying, in the next, when she does her next reassessment, there's a, they're going to go down based on what you're seeing in sales. If you look at a survey of properties that are being sold...
I get that, but when is she going to do her reassessment? Because I think it's based on, isn't it based on July 1 numbers?
Yes. So when we file with the DOR for the tax recap, that will be based on the actual assessment. But for this purpose, we have to put something in there. So that's why Wendy provided us...
I understand, but we, we've driven down our tax base on the assumption that it's going down. And yet, are we doing a reassessment this year? That's, that's all, that's all I'm asking. I, if we don't do a reassessment, then the assessed values are going to be exactly the same as they were last year, even if the, even if the house prices went down. So unless they get out there and do the reassessment, and I just don't know when that happens or how it happens, but my impression was not that it was done every single year.
Every three years.
Jeff?
So, yeah, I believe Paul's right. It is every three years. The only, the station mic is a maintenance. So if people are aware of this, they can ask for a maintenance individually.
They can.
Independent of the, I mean, you're...
They can. But until it's, no, it doesn't affect.
But I believe, I believe it's next year is the third year of the reassessment. We have to check with Wendy.
So it wasn't necessarily a discussion of the 2020 budget. It's a matter of discussing the...
Okay, but we, when Steve, when Steve Leahy was here, he explained it as the denominator.
Well, he was saying there wasn't a lot of new growth compared to the year before.
Well, he was also talking about it going down.
Talking about it going down, right.
Talking about it going down. So I just want to, I just want to make sure it's really gone down.
It was a discussion he had with Wendy.
In terms of the budget calculation right now, we have the, we have the valuation lower by, last year by $15 million.
So how did we get that if we haven't reassessed anything?
Well, that's an estimate that was provided to us by the assessor.
But the assessor is not going to reassess this year, or is she? Because if the assessors don't reassess this year, then our base is not going down by $15 million.
The sales, I mean, every time a sale, half has reassessed.
Yeah, she said...
Reassess the house, but every time a sale? I don't know.
She feels that they...
We're going to have $15 million of lost value through sales? That's, that's really hard to believe. We don't sell that many houses in Sherburne any year.
You don't get a lost value on sale anyway. Sales...
Yeah, we do.
That tax rate exists until the maintenance.
Like, there's 75, there were 75 sales in the last year and the average sale price is 800,000.
Right, so there's no way you're going to get 15 million off of that. 15 million of reduction. But, but anyway, and Sean's, Sean's right, you'd still have to, you'd still have to bait it if you, if your, if your property was not reassessed. So...
That's a good...
So where is this, is this, is this, what I'm wondering, is this, is this a real issue or is it not a real issue?
Let's, why don't you clarify that between Wendy and, why don't you talk to Wendy directly?
I definitely will, yeah.
And get a, get a clarification from her.
Yeah, because that would make obviously a big difference in the rate.
If we have 15 more million in base, at least for this year, that's, that's helpful. If we then reassess the following year and, and things are still depressed, then we can deal with it the following year.
That's a good point.
So maybe 2 percent...
Clarify it with Wendy, exactly. I think that's a good one.
Thank you.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, good, good call, Mike.
Sharon, one of the moving pieces was the MIAA. We had an estimate. I assume that's not been finalized yet.
2.09 percent.
We initially budgeted it at 5.
Five, yeah.
Okay.
We were, they were saying it was going to come in at 0.6 on average.
Yeah, and they, we did get, we got it in writing from them, 2.09 percent.
So the current model has the 2.09, not the 5. Okay, so that, because that was a $75,000 swing of the full.[1630.31]
Yep, so that was nice, that was good news.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Questions for Sharon?
Moving on to executive session?
Terrific.
Selectmen's reports.
Selectmen's reports, any, gentlemen, any reports?
I have a report. I have a proposal. So we have a new legislative session in the general court. And as part of the new legislative session, we're going through the budget process. And so I would like to ask our representatives in the general court to insert an earmark for us in the upcoming appropriations. And the earmark that I would request would be $1 million for the water damage at the Sherburne Library.
Sounds like a great idea to me.
Great idea to me too.
Which bill is it?
Again, I don't think we need a formal vote on that, do we?
Yes.
That'd be terrific, Paul.
I'm trying to, try to get it into the state budget as one of the earmarks. Because we have this issue that we have this damage. We've got lawsuits that we can discuss about that. But we have cost overruns. A little bit of state aid would ease the burden on the taxpayers. So the idea is to ask the state for some help, given the unusual circumstances here.
Worth a shot.
So Paul, how would that relate to the Mass Library Commission? Like we're already getting state aid.
Separate, separate, separate. In the Library Commission, we approached asking for some consideration and it was not a fruitful discussion. Trying to, they said no.
Very affirmative.
In slightly more firm terms than that.
Increase our grant by an extra two days, that's a good idea.
Kudo to Mary for trying. I mean, there's absolutely no harm in trying, so. That's terrific. Any other selectmen's reports?
Could you vote it so I can at least say that the.
Do you want to vote?
I've moved to support Paul's idea about the earmark.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks Paul. Any other selectmen's reports? We're ready to go into executive session. Before I make the motion, or do we expect to return to open session?
No.
I don't think we have any reason to.
Yes, I thought we were going to vote at.
We did.
You can't make a contract.
Yes.
If we just vote to sign it right now and not even go into executive session.
You voted it in executive session and.
Okay, so we are, we will be returning to open session. Let's do it in that order.
No, let's vote it now, I think he's right.
So let's, I, I move that we sign and ratify, is that the right word? The CM and the union.
It's memorandum of agreement, I think, right?
What's, what's the name of the union?
It's memorandum of agreement.
With what union?
It's AFs.
With the AFs me council 93 local 335.
That's my motion.
To approve that?
Well, I have one question before we move on. I just want to confirm that's the same thing that we saw more or less with our, we discussed it in executive session.